All right, welcome to the March 14th, 2023 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that the mayor is just running late, but he is on his way.
Yep, that is a good excuse for that, too. All right, so item number one, clarification items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Cliven, do you have any items for clarification on the consent calendar?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Stapleton?
I have none.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Weigand?
No.
Councilmember Avery?
None.
And I have none. So we're going to start up with proclamations. Item number SS2 is going to be the proclamation recognizing March as American Red Cross Month. We have the executive director Becky Fahey and on the board of directors and volunteer for public affairs Larry Fortmiller. If you could come forward. Thank you very much for being here. I know multiple councilmembers up here have done a good job of donating blood, so it's great to see you. I'm going to first read the proclamation, and then if you have any remarks, you're welcome to give them. So whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Newport Beach and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Newport Beach, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing an emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and connecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. So if you would like to say anything? You're welcome to.
Great, thank you. On behalf of the American Red Cross of Orange County and our Board of Directors, we thank you for recognizing March as Red Cross Month with a proclamation. Throughout the month of March, we honor those people who make the life-saving mission of the American Red Cross possible, and individuals across the country who turn compassion into action, helping others in times of crisis. Our workforce is made up of 90% volunteers, and every day, volunteers in Newport Beach roll up their sleeves to donate blood, answer a call in the middle of the night to help residents who've been displaced by a home fire, take a CPR or first aid class, or support our military community. Our Red Cross Month celebration has been an annual tradition since 1943, when President Franklin Roosevelt issued the first Red Cross Month proclamation. And we're proud to partner with the City of Newport Beach, and thank you for your support of all aspects of our mission. Thanks to the support of this community and this city council, we collected 1,031 units of life-saving blood in Newport Beach last year, and that represents up to 3,000 lives saved, so that's a huge impact. So we invite everyone here in Red Cross Month to join us, volunteer, make an appointment to donate blood, take a class or make a donation. Thank you so much.
Awesome, so we're going to take pictures right over there. Counsel, come on out.
Hello, apologize for my tardiness. All right, we're moving on to our proclamation and recognition of Newport Mesa Unified School District students. That's excellent. All students are from Newport Harbor High School. The first student is Joyce DeCarros. Please come forward, and we'll read the proclamation, and you can say a few words, and we'll take some photos. Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, the City of Newport Beach proclamation. Whereas Joyce DeCarros, a junior at Newport Beach High School, created an application called Impact to help improve youth awareness of world events. And the Impact application was awarded first place. Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
In the 2022 Congressional App Challenge for California's 48th Congressional District. And whereas the app is geared towards youths and connects users to world events happening on each continent while suggesting ways that someone can make an impact on the issue. I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Joyce DeCarros. Wonderful. Do you have a few words to say for us?
Yes, I do.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Blom. He's taught me everything I know, and he led me to this passion, which is computer science. And I also want to thank my parents for always supporting me. I didn't think I would be here today or any day, but here I am, and I want to thank the city council for inviting me here and recognizing me, and as well as the mayor for inviting me and recognizing me as well. And yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Should we take a picture? We're going to have a panel today. It's okay, go ahead.
Two, three, and one more.
All right. Wonderful. The second student is Ryan Honroy. If you could come on up, and I'll read the proclamation, and say a few things after. City of Newport Beach. Whereas Ryan Honroy, a freshman at Newport Harbor High School, engineered an application called Sensory AI to detect and communicate the presence of fire. Oh, that's amazing. Whereas Ryan hosts a panel discussion titled "The Future of Artificial Intelligence-Driven Environmental Solutions" and showcased his award-winning application, Sensory AI, to a global audience at the 2023 United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, UNESCO, conference in Paris. Ryan's app is a wildfire presentation tool that uses a network of wireless solar-powered sensors to quickly detect and report the presence of fire in high-risk areas. That's impressive. That was just hard for me to say. I'm glad that you actually made it.
Thank you.
Whereas I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Ryan Honroy. Thank you so much. Let's say a few words, we'd be welcome to.
I'd just like to say thank you to both the district and my parents for supporting me all throughout the way. I felt encouraged to always do my best and think of new ideas. I was like never afraid of saying or thinking of something incorrect, so thank you so much.
A pleasure, wonderful, thank you. Let's take a picture. All right, yeah, this is great. You guys did a good job. Okay, next, we're going to recognize the City of Newport Boys Water Polo Team.
Newport Harbor.
Oh, Newport, oh! I'm sorry, this is my side of the bay, I look. Careful there, buddy. Yeah, oh, sorry, Eric. I know, we got representation up here, too. Don't worry. The Newport Harbor Boys Water Polo Team for being amazing. All right, the City of Newport Beach proclamation. The Newport Harbor High School Boys Water Polo Team won the CIF Open Division Title for the second consecutive year. The Boys Water Polo Team were Sunset League Champions with a 30-3 overall record, and head coach Ross Sinclair was named CIF Coach of the Year for the second consecutive year, and are his team members Ben LeShifty? LeShifty? You call it out for me, I want to say it right. Leathy. Uh huh. C, there's a C, T, and H in there. Okay. Ben Leathy and Peter Castillo were named CIF Co-Players of the Year. Sorry, you guys threw me in the beginning. Team members Finn Lassure, going to Princeton, and Owen Bartlett, going to Johns Hopkins, wow, were named Newport Harbor High School Valedictorians. And the Newport Harbor High School Boys Water Polo Team continues to be the winningest program in CIF Boys Water Polo history with 14 titles. That's really impressive. I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do recognize the Newport Harbor High School Boys Water Polo Team. Thanks, guys. Members or coaches, come on up.
I'll be brief, but they're really nice young men, so I know you might have offended them for about five seconds, but just want to thank you guys for honoring them. I think, you know, Newport Harbor High School is an amazing school, led by Principal Bolton, Athletic Director Jerry Murray, but you see these guys here, they put in a lot of work, sacrifice, weekends, nights, early mornings. So to see the success is awesome, and for you guys to honor them is really much appreciated. So thank you very much.
It's our pleasure. Do any members of the team want to say anything? More than welcome.
I'm actually good.
Okay. All right, let's take a picture.
Okay, closer and some lower, if we could. Can we get in a little closer? I know. Here, let me try this angle. Okay, let them go first. If I had some more heels, I would have been like too low for the picture.
Are you done?
No, no, she's back. No, wait, I've been doing a thing. And now she's, she's back.
Wow, way to empty a room. All right, now we're going to move into last study session, which is the Groundwater Replenishment System Final Expansion Presentation. Wonderful.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. We're excited to present to you very briefly what I would describe as a behind-the-scenes, very innovative project and partnership effort. And we have some presenters with you tonight. Councilmember Brad Avery asked if this be placed on the agenda because he's on the board for the sanitation district, and it's very fitting with the completion of this big project and this partnership. So after me, we have Rob Thompson, who is the general manager of the Orange County Sanitation District, and then we also have Kelly Rowe, who is a board member with the Orange County Water District, as well as Steve Sheldon, who's also a board member with the Orange County Water District. They're both here because they represent portions of Newport Beach, so it's really a privilege that they're here with us tonight. And we also have John Kennedy, who is the Assistant General Manager of the Orange County Water District, that joined us tonight. This is a little way I like to visualize what's happening here with our efforts, with our partnership, our connectivity, and our investments. And I say the word investments because it takes kind of that forethought, it takes that doing something, you know, with money and time and thought to put something together. And what we have here, as you're going to see, is really the envy of many others across the state and across the country, and it's really the model to follow. And you can see kind of the cycle. We're just going to be talking about one portion of the water cycle, which is this groundwater replenishment system, but there's many other portions, but for time, we're going to kind of focus on this area, and you'll see why. So I'd like to turn it over to the sanitation district, and then to the water district, and then I'll close with kind of the bottom-line benefit to the city. Thank you. Rob?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today from Orange County Sanitation District, OC SAN. We have had a long cooperative relationship with the city for quite some time. What you see before you is our service area, so we service everything from Seal Beach to Yorba Linda, and then all the way down to Yorba City on its southern flank. 2.6 million people with a total flow to us of about 180 million gallons a day until it rains. That number actually goes up. We can see well into the 200 or 300 million gallons per day number during the rainstorms. You'll see on the map some little purple boxes in your city. There are eight pump stations located within your city that we operate. We have been working very hard to renew and refurbish that infrastructure across your city over the last 15 years. I apologize for all of the traffic inconveniences in the meantime, but it's well worth it because we take our jobs as environmental stewards very seriously. So our job is to work with local sewer service providers, whether it's the City of Newport Beach or Irvine Ranch Water District in your city. So all the businesses, residents, and industrial areas discharge in their private lines to the city lines or IRWDs lines. The local sewer service providers do a great job of collecting all of that wastewater and bringing it to us in our local trunks. We then take it to one of our two treatment plants. The entire city flow from Newport Beach goes to our Huntington Beach Plant. We then treat that water and then either discharge it to the ocean, which is the way it used to be, or if there's excess flow. But now we can actually deliver that water after our final expansion to the groundwater replenishment system that you'll hear more about. So we are in a position of recycling 100% of our recyclable water. So it's a great accomplishment. I think we're the first system of our kind in the world. So we are the bigger pipes and the bigger drainage systems, so what you'll see is one section of pipe. We have a 10-foot diameter pipe coming into our treatment plant at plant number two. We also have a 10-foot diameter pipe going to the ocean for high-rain events and taking the brine that's left over from the water treatment and sending that out to the ocean also. So when I talk about treatment and our treatment plants, we have three basic types of treatment, preliminary treatment, which is screenings and grit removal. That's where we remove everything from lumber to bowling balls to anything large you can fit in a manhole. For some reason, they end up in the sewer, they'll come to us, and they don't get hung up in our 10-foot diameter pipes, but we screen them out right up front with bar screens. We remove grit, which is anything from gravel to sand. We don't like that, it doesn't do us any good. But then we take everything else, which has about 350 parts-per-million organics. We use gravity and time to settle it out, that's primary treatment. So we do the lion's share of our treatment work there. We go from about 350 parts-per-million contaminants in the water down to about 100. Then we use biological treatment as secondary treatment. We use that to take away anything like sugar. If you pour Coke down the sink, because you don't want it anymore, that doesn't settle out, we have to remove those sorts of sugars and soluble organics with biological treatment. So when we're all done with what we do, we have about five parts-per-million contaminants left, perfectly safe to discharge into the ocean, five miles out to sea, and I'll show you a picture of that in a second. But now we're turning all that great treated water over to the water district to use microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and UV to further treat and then create a product water. Anything they don't use that they send back, they send it to us. So we take their MF discharge and recycle it back to them. We also take the brine from the RO, which is the saltwater left over, and we discharge that through our outfall pipeline. It's been a great cooperative relationship over a period of really 30 years developing the system, so very, very successful and a great resource for the people that we all serve. But a bigger part, I think, of what we do for the city is environmental. We make sure that the waste products of 2.6 million people don't end up right off your coast and destroy your tourism industry. So we have been very, very active for a period of 70 years, basically, making sure that the waters off Newport Beach are safe, they're good for the sea life, we make sure the fish are safe, we make sure the water and all those white, yellow dots you see there, those are all our sample points, well out into the range, seven miles out, all the way to the shore, and then along the shoreline is safe. In addition, we're looking at the Bent湖 community, which is the sands and muds out there to make sure we have great sea life off the coast. So we've been working very hard to not only protect the public health and the environment, but now we're also in the recycling business and making sure we make great water, energy, and biosolids, which are fertilizers for land applications. So that's a very, very quick overview of what we do, and at this point, I'll turn it over to my colleagues from the water district.
Yes, thank you. I'm Kelly Rowe, on the board, Orange County Water District. We have a 10-member board, three are appointed by the cities of Anaheim, Fullerton, and Santa Ana, they're original Metropolitan Water District member agencies, and the others are generally elected, seven by population. We represent two and a half million people, and our main job is to protect the groundwater basin covering the northern two-thirds of Orange County. And this is that button. This is our typical picture that we show, a cross-section of the Orange County groundwater basin, where the ocean's on the left and Anaheim's on the right, where the Santa Ana River comes in, we sink a lot of water into the aquifers, and then it goes down to the principal aquifer and the shallow aquifer. Newport Beach, you may not know, had groundwater wells near Area C here, right near the ocean, and Brookhurst and PCH about 100 years ago, but then seawater came in, and we had to shut those down, you had to get imported water. By 1990, you came back into the basin, have some wells that have been delivering most of your water at half the cost of imported water, so that's a good deal. The local supplies are mainly our Santa Ana River water that we have. It's one of the few rivers that flows continuously all year round, but then storm flows, we try to capture as much as we can. I hate seeing water going down the Santa Ana River. The other is natural recharge by rainfall in the areas that sink into the basins, and I can't see imported water that we supply when it's too dry. Like, three years before, we had hardly any rain, we bought more water from the Metropolitan Water District. And GRS has been our greatest achievement here, supplying more than a third of the water to our basin, and it's even more.
Thank you, Kelly. Hi, I'm Steve Sheldon, I'm one of the directors, I'm past president with the Orange County Water District. Very nice to see you. I'd like to first just compliment Mark on what a great job he does as your representative. I've worked together personally with him on various types of issues, and it's certainly been a pleasure, and so I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank Councilmember Brad Avery for scheduling this. I was going to thank the mayor, because he and I spoke about it at the mayor's dinner, and I was going to compliment him how expeditiously he put this together, the same way that he delivers a speech. But I guess I won't have to say that, so thank you. So I'm going to touch on the next, I go up here. Maybe one of those high school kids can show me how to use this. Okay, great. So under the groundwater replenishment, just as an overview of the Orange County Water District, our mission is to manage and to protect the groundwater. We manage the groundwater by replenishing it or refilling it, and we protect the groundwater by stopping the seawater intrusion that harms the groundwater. The groundwater replenishment program, as was mentioned, is the largest type facility in the world, and it will take water, that also was mentioned, that would normally discharge to the ocean, that we use in our recycling. Since 2008, when it was established, we have recycled over 400 billion gallons of water. It's incredible. And we currently have our final expansion, where we are going to be recycling 130 billion gallons of water per day. So we're just very, very happy about that. And the next slide here is the expansion itself. The final expansion serves over 1 billion people here in Orange County. It's very important that we become more and more independent from the imported water from Northern California, the delta, because that water is more expensive and is, by and large, unreliable. These efforts that we've had make it available that Newport Beach residents can be proud of, that 100% of their wastewater is recycled. That's a great thing to say. Not, I don't have another jurisdiction in the state, let alone the nation, that can say 100% of their wastewater is recycled. That's something really to be able to talk about. The groundwater expansion, again, was a partnership with the Orange County Sanitation District, and we truly, we couldn't have done it without them. We have to have them. So thank you, and I will now turn it back over to Mark.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Rob, and thank you, Kelly. Yeah, just in closing, I want you just to visualize that, bring it back down to Newport, where does our water come from? And so this graphic just kind of shows, in general, we get just about zero from Northern California. We're actually getting a trickle nowadays, but in general, it's been zero these last several years, 77% groundwater, and then 23% from the Colorado River. Like Kelly mentioned, 30 years ago, we had zero from groundwater, and we were almost 100% reliant on Colorado and Northern California. Thanks to the efforts of the expansion of the groundwater replenishment system, we'll be now at 85%, where we can pump groundwater up to 85% of our needs and 15% Colorado River. So just, again, lowering our dependency, making ourselves more self-reliant, and then continuing that partnership. And the water cycle, right? Every third grader learns about this water cycle, and they draw it, and here we are, living it. And, you know, just to kind of coin the phrase that someone mentioned, this is the largest project in the world, you know, like, we hear on our local radio station, "in the world." It's huge, right? Big. This is very, very impressive, totally behind-the-scenes, and we appreciate you giving us a few moments to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's amazing. It's very exciting. Councilmember Avery, let's start up here.
One of the great things about being on council is being on committees and being on boards and just learning so much, and I'll tell you, being on the OCSD, which is now OC SAN, board for the last six years is just absolutely an incredible learning experience for me, and also just the appreciation of the sheer effort of the water agencies and the steadiness of the whole thing. And we take it for granted, right? It comes out the tap, and that's very understandable. But also the health side of it, I just know... the tap, and that's very understandable. But also, the health side of it, I just know, and Councilmember Wagon's now also on the board as an alternate, you see these things come through, these huge infrastructure projects and repairs. And they're big numbers, but that's what it takes. And OC SAN is looking forward 20 years with these capital projects because we can't afford to have breaks. And particularly in Newport Beach, where we're so close to the coast. And so recently, as some of you know, that they've replaced all the pump stations in Newport Beach, a huge amount of effort and planning that started years and years ago. And it's extraordinary. And you think of what's happening on the border between Tijuana and San Diego, where they're just pumping raw sewage out. It's terrible. You think of countries like Canada, where Victoria, which is a rather large city, pumps straight out into, raw sewage straight out into the streets of Wanda Fuga. And maybe they've done a little something about it, but it's, I know that was going on 10 years ago. So it's exceptional. And obviously, protecting the environment off our coast is so important to all of us. So there's so many moving parts here. There are so many great people, and I've gotten to know the OC SAN in terms of just people are dedicated to their jobs, and the engineering is phenomenal. It's incredible. So it's been a joy for me to just, kind of just be a part of it and see this incredible collaboration between the water agencies. And the effort to bring the GWRS online is something. And it really protects us going forward, I believe, in terms of reliable water coming into our city and all the cities in Orange County that are served by this agency. And we're just, we're really lucky to have these agencies, because if your water isn't good, you've got a real problem, a real problem. And certainly, our utilities department with Mark Pacojevich does a great job on our end. We have our own issue with our own pipes and keeping them going and deciding when to replace and doing all the investigations that need to be done to catch breaks before they happen. So I just want to thank you. And Rob, thank you so much for coming tonight. I know you've just recently become the manager of the OC SAN. It's a huge job, a great leap for you after a great career as an engineer and really leading the engineering staff to where we are today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
I think this is Brad's seventh year on the OC SAN board. So thank you for doing that for the city of Newport Beach. The, Mark, I'd like to get a little bit more information about Newport's having 100% wastewater recycling. That's actually a big deal. That's a really big deal. So I'd love to have a little bit more info on that, because I'd like to share that out a little bit more. So thanks. This is great.
Wonderful. Okay, you know, I had an opportunity, when I first started, to go over to our utilities yard and look down at, like, our Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles reservoirs underneath the ground with giant pieces coming through. And I thought, this is so cool. And after actually touring a good amount of the utilities, I realized Mark might have the coolest job of all of us, and he gets to bring these projects in front of us, which, this is amazing, amazing. I like saying we're the best at something in the world, too. We'll take credit for it, so it's okay. No, I appreciate everyone for coming out. This is awesome, and thanks for sharing this with the public. Any other comments up here? Go out to public comment. Come right up to the microphone.
This is for comments on the groundwater.
We'll bring up public comments on agenda and non-agenda items in a moment. But if we have any public comments on this amazing project, or, I know, I'm sure that the water pull-up players have something to say about it. They just left a little early. We'll bring it back up here if anyone has anything else to say. Otherwise, you know, gentlemen, thank you so much. You don't think any direction from us. Just keep doing what you're doing. I think we all appreciate it. Wonderful. Thank you all. All right. That was, that was great. Now let's go out to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Why don't you come on up? You should have just stayed, you know?
How are you guys? Good afternoon. Do you guys have the presentation for Fentanyl Solution? Thank you. All right, I'll wait for that. Thank you. Well, I am the president and CEO of FentanylSolution.org. Do I control this? This is great. Hold on one sec. I don't know how to use this yet. Okay, there we go. All right, we are a 501(c)(3) organization located right here in Newport Beach. We're right on Newport Center Drive. And our organization's mission is to deliver comprehensive education, powerful advocacy, unwavering community support, and impartial, nonpartisan policies that will eradicate illicit fentanyl deaths in the United States. Although we are based in Orange County, we plan to grow our reach from here by first starting at home. Now, I know you guys seen this before, but fentanyl is instantly addictive and is being peddled to kids on social media sites, your kids, notably in Snapchat. And the kids are not getting a chance, like back in our times, to even get addicted, because it's killing them. They're dying. These are not addicts. These are teens who decided to experiment, many for the first time. Because I have a short time to speak today, I'm only addressing how this drug is killing children in Orange County. There are a few other demographics that are being affected as well, especially those 18 to age 45. Now, when I first made this slide, only four out of 10 pills were released with fentanyl. Today is 60%, according to the DEA. That's six out of 10 pills have the potential to be lethal. And it's estimated that possibly 100% of the pills on the black market are just fentanyl and filler. But they look just like real pharmaceuticals. And in Orange County, it's the number-one killer of children under the age of 17. The last statistic up here is old. It's from 2020. Overdose deaths are just about doubling every year. And most of those are fentanyl. We are brand new. We're seeking board members for our organization. I'm here today to just let you know that we exist. But currently on our board, we do have a politician. Some of you may know retired Senator Pat Bates. She's on our board. We have a couple of parents who have lost their children to illicit fentanyl from Orange County. I'm open to meeting with anyone here to discuss in detail our upcoming initiatives, what you have coming up, if you have any plans. We would like to be part of that. And I want you just to just keep us in mind, top of mind, for anything that you guys have coming up. And that's why I'm here today. And our name is our website. So you guys can find us there. And I have business cards for each one of you, if I can approach.
Wonderful. If you just hand them over. Wow. Thank you for being efficient and wonderful about that. We really appreciate it. And thanks for working on that. All right, Mr., oh, sorry, Jim. I don't know. I didn't look up for you. I've been flustered today.
Understandable. Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and this afternoon I have a non-agenda comment that actually touches on two of the items on your agenda tonight. And the comment is to bring to your attention, as I brought to the attention of the Parks, Speech, and Recreation Commission, that I think your current council policy, L6, may need some revisiting by you. Policy L6 is the city council policy for how private improvements in public right-of-way should be approved. The problem with the current policy is in looking at it, it appears that it's not consistent with our city charter. Two problems with it. Number one, it assigns the authority to approve improvements to the Planning Commission, and the charter clearly states that if you, the city council, want to assign authority to the Planning Commission, it needs to be done by ordinance. And a council policy is clearly not an ordinance. The second problem with it is that even if you use an ordinance, the delegation of authority to the Planning Commission has to be consistent with the rest of the city charter. And the problem with that is that not all, but some of the public right-of-ways are what are called parkways. They're the areas between a sidewalk and the street, or in some areas, just along the curb. And our city charter clearly states that the body that is supposed to advise you on all matters pertaining to parkways is the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. So number one, how it's possible to assign the authority to the Planning Commission without ordinance, and number two, to assign to them an authority that, at the very least, needs first advice from the Parks and Recreation Commission, whether you should be assigning it to them or to BBNR. Those are both problems, and I think they both need to be resolved by reconsideration of that policy by you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Well, we'll take a look at that. And, I mean, that's a great point. So as always, we appreciate it. Any other comments on agenda and non-agenda items from the public? All right, seeing none. Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
Yes, thank you. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel, discuss the possible initiation of litigation regarding one matter, all except forth under the agenda under item 4A. Thank you.
Wonderful. We're recessed until the 5:30 regular meeting. Thank you. I call the meeting to order for the March 14th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session report?
I do not have a closed session report this evening.
Wonderful. Now is going to be the time for the invocation by Monsignor Douglas Cook of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Catholic Church.
Good evening, all, and please be sure of the gratitude and prayers of Mount Carmel Parish Community. And would you all join me in prayer? O God, Father of wind and rain, Father of the warm and the sun soon to come, Father of all the human family, bless this meeting tonight. Bless the work of the council and all its helpers. Bless their decisions and deliberations. Bless those who gather here tonight for their input and their time. May we grow as a human family in the prosperity that you wish for us in peace and in virtue. All praise to you, God, Father, forever and ever. Amen. And may the Lord God bless you all, Father and Son and Holy Spirit. Amen. And have a good meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please join us up here in the pledge to our beautiful country. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Orange County, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, and just the public.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Wonderful. Now is the time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on a future agenda. Councilmember Kleinman, do you have any announcements?
I do. The benefit to being on the end here is I get to be the first to congratulate Councilmember Stapleton on his engagement over the weekend.
Oh, thank you.
A quick report, other than that, along with Councilmember Grant, I attended the first annual Orange County Women in Leadership Summit hosted by SoCal Edison and the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce. I had a couple of very productive meetings with several of our airline, commercial airline stakeholders, as well as the FBOs, the fixed base operators at John Wayne Airport. And I also met separately with both Supervisor Wagner and Foley to talk about our county partnership and efforts related to homelessness, residential recovery facilities, and the airport.
Terrific.
Wonderful. Councilmember Stapleton?
Yeah, I had a meeting with Mayor Blom and Councilwoman Eric Wagen with SoCal Edison. We've seen a lot of power issues in District 1 as it relates to reliability. So we had a good meeting with leadership and looking for ways the city can be more helpful with regulatory agencies as well, doing all we can to make sure that the residents of Newport Beach, especially District 1, get all the power that they need all the time. So it was a good meeting and look forward to continue partnership with them. Water Quality Committee, I do have the privilege of serving as the chair. We've been working on our priorities for the year, and then also focusing heavily on sand replenishment right now on the west side and our beaches up and down Newport Coast. Had the pleasure of attending the CDM Home Tour. So congratulations to them for what they've done to help raise money for CDM High School and Middle School through the PTA. I think it is one of their biggest fundraisers. Also went and toured the Emergency Operations Center, an incredible operation here at the city, one that I hope we never have to use, but it's good to know that we have it. I was at the Newport Shores Community Association Annual Meeting as well and presented about what's going on on the west side of Newport infrastructure and things, and also met with the Central Newport Association yesterday. And then Mayor Blom and myself were at the Spirit Run with a few other council members as well. But congratulations to Diane Doherty and all that she's doing to continue to raise money for youth, sports, education, and programs. That was an incredible event to see. And yes, I did get engaged on Friday in the most Newport way as possible, on a Duffy in our beautiful harbor. So thank you.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you. Busy last two weeks. I took a tour of the Newport Aquatic Center, not only the facility, but from the water, and watched our great youth rowing out on the water. I participated with our city manager, Grace Wong, in a presentation to Speak Up Newport. And I want to compliment Grace on really providing such a wonderful opportunity for our community to understand the state of our city, and thank you so much for doing that. I also, as Councilwoman Kleinman referenced, attended the 2023 Orange County Women in Leadership Summit, The Art of the Possible. I attended the Newport Beach PD Mobile Cafe. These are opportunities for the public, for residents, or anybody who would like to attend, to meet with people that are working with the Newport Beach Police Department, either sworn officers or volunteers in a relaxed environment. They're wonderful opportunities, and I encourage everyone to go online and see when the next Newport Beach Mobile Cafe is taking place. I also participated at the Spirit Run. I was fortunate enough to be able to start the dog mile, which was very fun. I wish I had given out the video for you to all see the dogs all running out at one time, but very impressive performance. The winner of the dog mile was a human named Brian Duff with his dog Axel. And he ran the mile with his dog attached to him in four minutes and 17 seconds, which is very impressive. He's actually the world record holder. In 2016, he ran it in four minutes and 13 seconds. So very impressive showing. And thank you also, as Joe had mentioned, to Diane Doherty. She is a champion of this fundraiser for the Newport Mesa Unified School District every year. It's a huge endeavor, and she does it very gracefully. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagen?
Yeah, mine is more District 3 specific, and I wrote it out. On the morning of Thursday, March 3rd, the hillside at 1930 Galaxy Drive in Dover Shores gave way, and the entire backyard of the property fell into the back bay. A 911 call was placed, and Newport Fire was on site in less than five minutes to make sure everyone was safe. Our utilities, public works, and community development departments have been working tirelessly to assist the affected homeowners. Just today, the Board of Supervisors adopted a proclamation of emergency to help those impacted by the circumstances and to seek assistance from the state. Since the hillside is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Fish and Wildlife, staff has notified our local contacts. Additionally, our state senator and state assembly member are aware of the situation and have reached out to the Department of Fish and Wildlife. This past weekend, Assemblymember Dixon and Supervisor Foley visited the affected area separately and have spoken with the homeowners. Our staff will continue to support these homeowners as they work throughout this difficult time. And again, I want to thank staff for And again, I want to thank staff for being on site there 24 hours during these rainstorms, doing what they're doing to protect our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
No report.
Mayor Protam O'Neal.
Sorry, I've got a few more than I normal on this one, so, I'm on the board for the Association of California Cities, Orange County. We went up for a policy delegation discussion up to Sacramento last week, advocating for policies to bring home to Orange County. And we were focused on a lot of the issues that you would assume. We were not as successful as I would have liked, but we'll continue to advocate for the cities of Orange County. I'm also in the Board of Director TCA, and we had our meeting last week. I was able to attend a Eagle Scout badge for Will Carlson, just incredible to watch that. On March 23rd, I'm going to be a speaker on a panel for the Orange County Council of Governments, otherwise known as OCOG, for their General Assembly meeting, talking about regional transportation in my capacity as the chairman for the San Joaquin Hills Board TCA. We have a Finance Committee meeting here in Newport Beach on Thursday, the 16th. We also have the HOG Classic coming up. I really hope a lot of you will be able to go and attend. It'll be fantastic. And then on March 26th, the Corona Mar High School Car Show is going to be going, which will be a great time, good benefit. And Joe, are you a judge on that one?
Noah took my spot. I'll be out of town.
Okay, and Noah and I will be judges for the Corona Mar High School Car Show on the 26th. Encourage you to go. It'll be great. Thanks.
Excellent. We're now on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. This one's going to be a non-discussion item. Mayor Protam O'Neal has asked council to consider directing staff to develop a pilot program that allows Newport Beach Community Homeowners Associations that represent at least 50 homeowners to install solar-powered security cameras, signs, and other related improvements in the public right of way. Let's take a straw vote on that one.
As unanimous, seven zero.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, can you please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 11. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Wonderful. Councilmember Kleinman, do you have any items to pull from consent or conflicts to announce related to items one through 11?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I'm not pulling anything, but I have a conflict in regards to Agenda Item Number Six because I received a campaign contribution from Richard Tate and Tate and Associates, and Agenda Item Number Seven because I received a campaign contribution from CRNR. All contributions were made within the last 12 months and exceeded $250.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Nothing to pull, but I will recuse myself from Agenda Item Number Seven based on real property interests because this item has a potential impact on my personal residence.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagen.
I have the exact same conflict as Councilmember Stapleton for the exact same reasons.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Protam O'Neal.
None.
And I have none.
Okay. I'll move the consent calendar, approval of the consent calendar with item number one amended by, for the amended minutes that are in the lobby and in front of us, with conflicts noted on item number six by Councilmembers Stapleton and Wagen, and item number seven showing recusals by Councilmembers Stapleton, Grant, and Wagen.
Wonderful. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember Kleinman. We're going to go out, public comment on consent items, one through 11. That's what I thought. Oh, no. Perfect.
Good afternoon. Tim Stokes, Santa Ana Heights. Item number seven is a switch from when our annexation agreement with Newport Coast, Bonita Canyon, and Santa Ana Heights. I think this item should include the area of Santa Ana Heights as well. It's being serviced by the Costa Mesa Sand District, which is non-compliant as well. And we're also, after 20 years of being in the city, are kind of an anomaly. We pay for our own trash and services and stuff, and we think, as patient as we are, we would hope that that would be carried through if other communities, as my dear friend Dave Webb said, be patient. And so 20 years later, we're patient. So thank you for bringing this up, and I hope, maybe this thing can just be re-racked and brought our community into it as well, and then, you know, balance the services throughout the whole of Newport Beach rather than us being an anomaly up in the Heights area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on consent calendar items, one through 11? Wonderful.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry, Jim. I've lost you twice today. I don't know what happened.
Yeah, Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser, and I just wanted to build a little on the comments from Tim Stokes. I don't know if everybody listening is quite aware that we have what to many seems a very unfair situation in Newport Beach, that the people who live on land that was part of our city before 1996 have their residential trash collection paid for out of their property tax, so-called free trash service. Those on land that was added to Newport Beach after 1996 have to pay for themselves. I don't know how carefully you read this item number seven. It seems to me somewhat deceptively written. It implies that we're making an offer to the residents of Bonita Canyon. Should they be willing to accept that, to switch from their current contractor they pay for to a contract through the city, but in the process, the staff is recommending that that service be paid for, not by the residents who are currently paying for it, but all the other residents of Newport Beach. That on the face of things sounds kind of okay, except there are other, as Tim pointed out, many other similarly situated residents in Newport Beach, and it seems rather unethical to offer that relief to this one set of residents and not to the others in Newport Beach. Though I really don't think this should be on the consent calendar, I think it should be part of a larger discussion of how we even that playing field or need to do that. Otherwise, I don't see how you can ethically offer this relief just to one set of residents. The problem, and the staff is claiming, the reason they need to do this is because the contractor that they hire is not compliant with our organics recycling program, but as they mentioned, there is a much less costly alternative for the rest of Newport Beach, which is just to bring that hauler into compliance, and the city has the power to require that. And so this really does not seem like a consent calendar item to me when you have two quite viable possibles, and I don't know why all of you would agree on putting the burden of paying the private cost on all the rest of us for this one group only and not just bring the hauler into compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on consent calendar items, one through 11? Seeing no more. We're going to bring it back up here. We have any other comments from the dais on this? Okay. We have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carried unanimously, seven zero.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have public comments on non-agenda items. Non-agenda items. Really? Okay, good. That's exactly, oh, hi Nancy.
I know we have evacuation routes, but do we have evacuation plans? Because I don't know if we had a fire in one area or an earthquake in another area, I don't know where I'm supposed to go. And I mean, we've seen enough things, it would be nice to know. This is the plan for Corona Mar, this is Peninsula Well, you guys, you know we're going to get off of Peninsula anyway, but the other areas, if we all had a clear idea, it might, well, I don't mean, but it might be nice for more information for the residents.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Guess I'm not making it home.
Hi, my name is Jim Dastor. I wanted to bring up the assessment District 124 on Balboa Island. It has raised its ugly head again. To summarize, there are three groups of property owners on Balboa Island. Those who crave undergrounding no matter what the cost, those who want undergrounding but at a fair and fixed price, and those who do not need undergrounding or have other financial priorities. Whether one likes it or not, and I don't, the Municipal Improvement Act of 1913 is used as a democratic means for forming assessment districts. Over a decade ago, Group B and C prevailed in stopping the creation of an undergrounding district on Balboa Island. Group A did not take kindly to it, and it went to work over the next several years, working, handing love with the city staff to bring it up again. It's fine, no problem. Group A was finally successful, and on July 27, 2021, AD 124 was formed. The vote was based on the project not costing over $32.8 million, and the bond rate for those opting to pay for it over a period of 20 years not exceeding 5%. Groups B and C accepted their defeat without recrimination. It came as a total surprise to some of us when we learned that the city staff believes that there is a possibility of, that additional funds may be needed, but the staff will not know the amount until the bid numbers for the last of the three phases are in hand. In February, the city awarded a contract for the first phase, knowing the project will need more money. In bypassing approval from the property owners for unknown and unlimited cost increases, the city explicitly accepted responsibility for all additional costs associated with AD 124. To properly administer work under AD 124, the staff should have gone for bids on the whole project so that the total cost would be known before moving ahead. Also, a full price for the whole project puts the responsibility for inflation on the shoulders of the contractor and not the property owners. It is also a no-brainer that if the project was bid as a whole, the total cost would be less due to economies of scale. That is what under the bridge now. So I understand that the city staff is going to make a presentation on April 22nd at the Balboa Island Fire Station explaining what is going on with AD 124. In view of the fact that payment of assessments is due on March 31.
Thank you. Let's wrap it up.
It would be best for all concerned if the meeting could be held prior to March 31st. If that is not practical, I humbly request that the date for payment of assessments be moved to April 30th or around that time.
Joe, you can submit the rest to us as well. I think we already have the letter as well, and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Okay. Seeing none. We're going to go on to current business, which is assuming why we're all hanging out here together on this beautiful Tuesday. Item 12 is code update recommendations related to fractional ownership. We're going to move over to our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor Blom, and City Councilmembers. Good evening. I'm Simone Jurjos, Community Development Director, and with me is Jaime Murillo, our principal planner. Tonight, we're going to have a kind of a short presentation, and it's really going to be focusing on the Planning Commission's recommendations to the City Council. If you recall, you've delegated some work to the Planning Commission to review the issue of fractional homeownership. They have spent about five months on this issue and now have provided recommendations to the City Council. For our presentation, we have maybe about 13 slides to cover with you. We also have a lot of backup slides if you want to see a map, or if you want some additional data, we probably have a slide on that. We'll just share it with you if you request it. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Mr. Murillo.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Mayor Blom, members of the council. Jaime Murillo. I'd just like to start off by providing a little bit of background. So this item or this issue was first brought forth to the City Council back in November of 2021 as a result of a number of complaints the city started receiving related to fractional homeownership. At that time, we had a total of four properties that were known to be within the city. After that discussion, the City Council directed staff to research this topic further and see what other cities were doing. And so staff actually consulted with Sagecrest Planning Environmental. They helped prepare a report. They did extensive research and reached out to a number of other cities that have a lot of visitor accommodations and that were experiencing fractional ownership issues as well. And so we returned with research to the City Council on September 13, 2022, at a council study session. When we returned, we had a total of 11 known homes in the city. After discussion, the City Council directed staff to return with a number of action items, and so we quickly returned to the City Council on September 27, 2022. The council at that time initiated a code amendment and local coastal program amendment, authorizing staff to work on this issue. There was a discussion of pursuing a moratorium, however, as a result of the discussion that occurred at that meeting, it was determined that the findings necessary for a moratorium were difficult to make, and so the City Council did not pursue a moratorium. But they did direct staff to work quickly with the Planning Commission, given that this is an important topic. And so staff quickly turned around and held a study session with our Planning Commission on October 6, 2022. We provided a very comprehensive overview of the topic and provided a number of options for the Planning Commission to consider. However, as a result of that discussion, the Commission felt that this was an extremely complex issue and was difficult to provide a recommendation in one meeting, and so they actually directed to form an ad hoc committee, allowing members of the Commission to work more closely on this topic. And the ad hoc committee was quickly formed, and it consisted of Commissioners Lowry and Rosine, and former Commissioner Wagen, now Councilmember Wagen. There was a total of seven meetings that the ad hoc committee held, and that included meetings with residents as well as Picasso. On good faith effort, Picasso also provided a draft ordinance that they felt addressed the community concerns, but that would allow for their operation to continue operating in the city. And so we returned with that information to the whole of the Planning Commission on February 24, 2023. And I do just want to point out a correction on the handout of the presentation that is available for the council and the public. There's an error on the date. The correct date was February 24, 2023. But the ad hoc committee did share their recommendations to establish a new regulatory process to permit fractional homeownership units. At that time, we did find there's an additional fractional home in the city, so we have a total of 12 that we're aware of. However, after receiving public testimony from members of the public as well as representatives from Picasso, the general consensus of the Planning Commission was that these fractional homeownership units really are a similar timeshare, and that they do have similar impacts on residential neighborhoods similar to short-term lodging units, and it's really leading to the commercialization of these residential units in these neighborhoods. And so ultimately, their recommendation was two parts. The first was to expand the definition of timeshare to capture fractional homeownership units, which would thereby effectively prohibit them. However, if the City Council decides to move forward with some sort of regulatory framework that would allow for them in residential districts, they do have a number of recommendations, and so I'll kind of dive into each of these in a little bit more detail. So with that first recommendation to expand the definition of timeshare, this would necessitate a amendment to both our Title 20, our zoning code, and Title 21, our local coastal program, to amend the definition of timeshare so that it's clear that fractional homeownerships are included in this definition of timeshare. Once that definition is amended, fractional homeownerships would then be subject to the city's existing timeshare regulations. And so what that would mean is they would be prohibited in all residential zoning districts. Timeshares are allowed in certain commercial mixed-use districts subject to the approval of a use permit, but they're also subject to a number of other standards, and one is there's a prohibition on the conversion of existing dwelling units. Also, timeshare developments are required to be a minimum of 300 units. There's also a development agreement required, and submit all the sales operating management plan. And so, given those restrictions... And so, given those restrictions, the Picasso Amber model would effectively be prohibited. We did distribute through supplemental materials revised definitions that we've created that we believe would clearly capture these fractional homeownerships. I'm not going to get into the details of the slide, but it is available on the slide if we want to return for discussion purposes later. These are additional definitions. However, if the council desires to authorize fractional homeownership as a use separate from timeshares, the planning commission did have a number of recommendations, and that is to regulate them similar to short-term lodging units, and specifically prohibit them in the single-family residential zones or the R1 zones. They'd also recommend adding a maximum cap. They didn't come up with a cap. They recommended the council determine what that appropriate cap should be, similar to short-term lodging. They would recommend including some sort of public noticing for the neighbors to increase transparency related to these units, and recommend an enforcement process where violations could lead to suspensions of use. Some additional regulations are shown on the slide, and that's to ensure that these units comply with today's parking requirements, to ensure adequate supply of parking. Additional noise standards that would prohibit exterior noise or amplify noise between hours of 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. Mandate a submitted management plan to address long-term maintenance and landscaping and trash requirements. And more importantly, is identifying a 24-hour local contact person, so someone that can respond in 30 minutes and that they live within 25 miles. They'd also prohibit, or recommend prohibition on subletting, not only for short-term lodging, but also for guest use when the fractional owner is not present. And lastly, they recommended posting a good neighbor policy, which are the rules that these owners should abide by, and a requirement that these owners submit acknowledgements that they're aware of the different rules. And so for tonight's discussion, staff is seeking direction on how to proceed on this issue. A number of options, as the planning commission recommended, expand the definition of timeshare to clearly include fractional homeownerships, thereby effectively prohibiting this type of operation. Should the council decide to move forward with some sort of regulatory process, again, incorporate the recommendations of the commission, or the council can choose to continue to allow fractional ownerships to continue unregulated. So that concludes our presentation. Available for questions.
Wonderful. Thank you for that thoughtful presentation. We're going to bring it back up here to the dais. Who's jumping in first?
I'll jump in.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Let's assume for a moment that we said that the language that we've got in front of us looks good. So what is, what's the process that it plays out to get it back to us to vote on?
So to receive direction to move forward, the change of the definition, we would craft a resolution in draft language to present to the planning commission at a public hearing. Once we received their recommendation, then we'd return back to the city council with an ordinance. So we would.
Does it need to go to planning commission? Or can it just, I mean, so the process that we've gone through on this is, it's been extensive. I mean, this has, this has been complicated, but you know, but we appreciate seeing everyone here. We've, you can, you've seen on the discussion, we've been kind of working through language for a while and surveying what other cities have been doing, and so you're seeing some of the fruits of that labor right now. So appreciate everyone being here. I just, I'm going to talk process for just a second, so I hope I don't lose anybody, but just FYI. So, so we've already, we've worked through the survey side at the council level. We gave direction to planning commission to work through some of the language and policy discussion. It's come back to us. We now have, you know, at least a partial recommendation from planning commission. We even have draft language in front of us that staff is, is potentially, you know, is asking us to at least take a look at. It's not in front of us to make that vote tonight on that language, but given everything that we've already done, and I guess maybe this is an errant question, can, can we, if the, if the council were to make a recommendation tonight, given everything that's gone through on the process side, can it just come back to us instead of going back through planning?
Yeah, I think because you've gotten such an extensive look at it at the planning commission level, and they've come up with a recommendation, I don't think there, it has to go back to planning commission. You could refer back to them if you want to, but it can come directly back to the council with the draft language.
Okay. Okay. And then, which you might appreciate not having to do multiple more. Okay. So anyway, so I'm just throwing that out there. And then the, the language that I saw, sorry, let me pull this up real quick. I'm not going to talk through the language, but we're looking at Title 20. Do we have to touch Title 21 also as part of this, or is this?
Correct. We'll have to make, do both of them for consistency, and then we have coastal commission to deal with.
Only on 21, though?
Correct.
So 20 would be, okay. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Wonderful. Councilman Bravery.
Thank you. It's great to see everybody here because this is an important issue, and we really rely on the public showing up when we have these issues that matter to our community. I just, I read something from somewhere, I'm not sure, that said that people who would have a share of a Picasso home could rent their share, but I don't believe that's true. Is that, do you know if that's part of the?
My understanding is Picasso's operating requirements, they actually don't allow them to, to sublet. I'm not aware of the other operation, Amber, and what the regulation is.
That's just my understanding. Thank you. Like you cannot rent your share.
Okay. Well, I'll take a quick jump into this. Seeing no more comments up here. You know, I think I look out there, and I see a lot of people that are speaking with their presence, and I think that's really important. I think that this is kind of the cornerstone for what democracy is, that, you know, our job is to be up here and represent the people out there. And I think Mayor Protem O'Neill touched upon it really well, that sometimes the process is a little complicated, too. And I think it's important, just to reiterate one more time, that we're giving direction tonight. We're not getting to vote on anything that will, will ban anything this evening. So, and we're looking forward to hearing from all of you. It's going to be very exciting. But, you know, as I sit up here, I think all of these council members are looking at, and I can't speak for them, and I'm not saying that, you know, ample testimony won't sway us, but I do think that we all see you. And if I was to go up and down this council and hear their voices and hear what they have to say about this, I think they see you, too. And so I say that as we're going to come and start talking to us, that we understand the frustrations you all feel. And that doesn't mean that everyone needs to give a heartfelt speech about how we feel. And so I, you know, I kind of would like to look at my colleagues or hear some words from them, kind of see their sentiment, so that it might be able to shape the public comments that come after. No, that's my piece. Oh, Councilmember Graham. Yes.
I give in. I will make a comment. I guess I would say, you know, there's an old adage that says, "I know it when I see it." And I think in this instance, given the extensive public record, the staff reports, the planning commission meetings and reports, many, many, many of the public that have registered their comments with us via emails, phone calls, and the like, indications from the industry as to what they would appreciate, you know, we've pretty much gone full circle on this. And as everyone else who's spoken has said, it's greatly appreciated to see our community come out and understand exactly what you're interested in as far as policy goes from, from our body. And I would just reiterate, you know, we know it when we see it in this lifetime that we're in, and I think this is one of those opportunities where we understand, or at least I, I can't speak for everyone else, understand exactly what the community has been experiencing and is interested in seeing and appreciate that that's been communicated so well by the community.
Thank you very much for that.
You know what? I'll go. So if it wasn't clear from the questions that I was asking staff, I think we've gotten to the point now where the direction that we're going to be going, at least where I would be going, is to bring back the language that is, that has been put forward. I think that, that that would align with pretty much what everyone right now is asking for. And I think that we've gone through the process enough to see what this is, what this isn't, and start moving forward with, with, with the language that we've got in place. So that's where I'm at. I'd be kind of curious to see where other folks are, and we've done this in the past. I mean, maybe, maybe we just do a quick straw vote, just kind of see where people are feeling before we go to public comment.
That is a, that is an excellent idea, Mayor Protem. I would really like to, to see if that straw vote would work out for us. So maybe just counsel up here, a quick, you know, this, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Look at that. Councilmember Wigan.
Yeah, so when this item came to the planning commission, which I happened to be a member of at the time, I did feel it was getting very political, and several of us were running for office at the time. In fact, this majority of this body is, was running for office. And on the campaign trail, you sometimes say things that you come back to looking, did I mean to say that, or was I truthful in what I was saying? But I was somebody on the campaign trail who was saying that I was in opposition to this process of having fractional homes in the city. So now here we are discussing it. When we were at the planning commission, I was assigned to be on the ad hoc committee. I was a participant in, in two of the meetings, and I, I felt that we had a good group, but I got to fall off once I was elected, so I didn't get to see forth the entirety of that decision. So, but I appreciate those members who then took it to the full body of the planning commission. And there were times on the planning commission where I was the lone dissension on that body, and I was surprised to see that the preferred recommendation is what is before us, and I will be supporting that preferred recommendation.
We're going to hold applause, please. We, we see you. Don't worry. Okay. Councilmember Kleinman.
Thank you. So I guess I view Picasso as similar to sort of an Uber, you know, a market disruptor creating a new business model that has not been previously seen or utilized. And obviously, we're not the only jurisdiction that's grappling with how to get our arms around this. What we know is that we cannot preclude owner occupants from purchasing property in an LLC, nor do I think we want to do that. We cannot prevent property owners from hiring a company to manage their properties, nor do I think we want to do that. What we can look at is the use of the property and whether it's consistent with the neighboring uses as intended by our general plan and our zoning code. This is obviously a very transient use that has the potential for impacts that can be differentiated from the typical residential use in our neighborhoods. What I'll say is, for the record, I'm not confident that the law will be on our side in the interpretation of land use here, but what I am clear about, from the many, many, many emails that we received and from all of you here tonight, is the community's desire to disallow this type of use to the extent that we're able. So absent the willingness of these operators to seize acquisition of these properties while the court in the Picasso versus the St. Helena case continues to examine whether the city exceeded its zoning authority in taking action to treat fractional ownership as consistent with a timeshare, we're left with, I think, really no choice but to respond to the community's will to address this. And consistent with what we've heard from up here so far, I think the way that we do that is in adding language that specifically addresses this type of fractional ownership to our existing ordinance. In my opinion, the alternative of regulating through some kind of permitting process really raises too many other questions about monitoring and enforcement that lacks consequences and unfairly burdens our neighboring residents who are typically tasked with self-enforcement and are already overextended, both code enforcement and police departments to be responsive. So in terms of straw vote, I, too, would kind of echo what we've heard up here so far, being supportive of the recommendation and adding language to our existing ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, well, it's good to see all of you. I would say this maybe is our first real city council meeting, and I think this is why we all wanted to run for city council, to be in positions of leadership for moments just like this. I couldn't agree more with my council colleagues. When you talk about technologies and adapting in a city like Newport Beach, whether it's Uber, Airbnb, cities must learn to continue to adapt, and fractional ownership is no exception to that. I always want to protect property rights and do what, to take, not want to take away the rights of landowners, how they're currently operating legally. Having said that, I recognize a city needs to adapt proper, it needs to properly address fractional ownership. So as it stands today, allowing fractional ownership, homeownership, as they're being used today, is an improper use of land planning. It creates a camouflage for timeshares in areas that are not zoned or currently do not permit. If it acts like a timeshare, we should probably regulate it like a timeshare. I think when the ordinance was created back in the day, I think if they had fractional ownership then, they would have put it in the ordinance just like they have, like we're trying to attempt to do today. There's a terrific sense of community in District One. I've been down on District One for 20 years, living on the peninsula, and I'm proud to say that there is more family-friendly vibe on the peninsula than I've ever seen before. I want that to continue. I don't want that go the opposite way. Commercializations of our neighborhoods is not what I'm looking for. Having adverse impacts on quality of life, especially in dense neighborhoods like in District One and also Corona del Mar, also reducing future housing stock. I'm all about the next generation having the ability to purchase a home, and I'm afraid if these fractional homeownerships continue, we will see oceanfront property and other properties that come off the market maybe forever. So I will continue to support local investors investing in key projects in our city where we generate large revenue for a general fund like all of our hotels here in the city. I will talk about Lido House, I will talk about Vea, and I will also include Pendry in that. Cities thrive when you move in and out of homes, and it frees up a place for someone else to move into, not when they are properly gobbled up in a timeshare company at extreme price. So I will certainly be supporting the expansion of the definition to include this in the timeshares.
Wonderful. Thank you. It was wonderful to hear from my colleagues up here. And I echo a lot of those sentiments as I've spoken with a lot of you, that, you know, I think there's definitely some difficulties in what we're doing, but we're looking out there, and we are hearing the will of the people, and that is why I'm also in support of, of the, expanding the definition of timeshare. So, Councilmember Avery.
I've sort of distilled this down in my mind, that, you know, when I bought my house in an R1 district in Newport Heights 36 years ago, you know, it just never occurred to me that R1 would be threatened. And as we've all seen recently, you know, all of our, our city's somewhat threatened by all the changes coming down from the state that we're, we have to take on and deal with. But the sanctance, the sanctity of one to me is R1. And there will be, there are people who think it's immoral to live, you know, on a house and on a lot, you know, and R1 is not a justifiable thing, and I just couldn't disagree more because it's about building families and relationships and community, and we need to have, this is just the key to it, and I, we all know that. And we certainly provide short-term rentals, more than any other city, over 1,600 to people. So it's not like we're not doing our fair share of letting people experience a Newport Beach. And, you know, I think as far as I'm concerned, I welcome that because I've taken advantage of short-term rentals and enjoy them up and down the California coast. because I've taken advantage of short-term rentals and enjoyed them up and down the California coast. So I get that. So we're doing a good job there. But to me, a deal's a deal. And R1, when you buy your home, it's inconceivable to me that you would end up having a rehab home next door to you, which has happened to many people in our city, or, in this case, you know, a timeshare or a, you know, whatever you want to call it. It's just the cycles are too, too much for being shoved into an R1 neighborhood, as far as I'm concerned. So that's all. That's just my, that's my feeling as a resident. And certainly, it informs my thoughts as a council member. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think seeing a pretty unanimous front up here with a good amount of people out there. I mean, we could still be swayed by some very persuasive comment. But I want to go out to the public for public comment. And I'm going to limit this to two minutes per person, as there are a lot of people speaking. And we would like to see a conclusion to this this evening. So we're going to remove off the dais with that wonderful bit of knowledge that we can't change anything today, but we can direct staff for an ordinance and that you have kind of a good feeling about what's happening right now. So out to public comment. Thank you, Nancy.
Nancy Gardner. When did the two in R2 become second class? I really resent the fact that, oh, R1 is protected from everything. That was the one thing I really noticed in the management thing. Oh, we'll not put it in R1. I understand the reasoning, but there's enough R2 in nice properties that they would certainly be attractive. So let's not just say, oh, we can dump everything in R2. That R1 is somehow too precious.
Thank you very much. Next comment. And if we are planning on commenting on this, I would, we're going to hold all applause this evening. Put your hand up and shake it silently if you wish. If you do want to speak, I would invite you to kind of line up down the center of the aisle and wrap around, just so we can get this moving. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Blom, members of the council. Speaking of applause, I applaud the direction that you seem to be going in. I would point out, though, if the wish to prohibit this use in Newport Beach is sincere, you need not only an ordinance prohibiting the use, but you also need a mechanism to enforce the ordinance. And a number of the other cities in California who have taken the same approach that you are doing incorporate into their ordinance enforcement mechanisms specifically addressing violations of this, which include not only the use of the property, but advertising that use, which would not be permitted in Newport Beach. The cities of St. Helena, Sonoma, most recently Carmel by the Sea, their ordinances all make it unlawful. In fact, they make it a misdemeanor to advertise a property, advertise the sale of a property in those cities for this use, which is not allowed in that city. And I think it's something you need to seriously consider because in dealing with the short-term lodging issue, the way that we got a handle on that was to go after the people who were advertising unpermitted short-term lodgings in Newport Beach and have a mechanism to enforce and prohibit that advertisement. So I think that's an element that needs to be considered in this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good evening. Patty Johnson. I live on Balboa Island. I'm going to shift a little bit for what I'm going to say because I think my assumption is, of, I feel relieved in knowing most of your positions. However, I think I can add some valuable insight. I had an office in San Clemente, a real estate company, for 38 years. And we actually introduced timeshare concepts to the coastal a long time ago. And there are existing timeshare properties in San Clemente that are operating right now. They are in commercially zoned R3 to R4 areas. San Clemente Pier area, where it's very, very, very commercialized. San Clemente End was converted to a timeshare at the south end of San Clemente and operating very well. I will say this. Timeshares provide opportunities. They provide incredible revenues to the city, which is very tempting. However, they operate no differently than a vacation rental, which I know the city made caps, put required onsite parking of one spot. But they're no different. And we already have a huge, huge nightmare. On my street alone, we have five vacation rental properties that have between five and 15 cars just on 100 block of the city. The timeshare aspect of, you know, the fractional, it's obvious. They're trying to get away from the intent, saying they're lower than the limit of what's considered a timeshare, but they're clearly a timeshare. There's no monitoring of subletting at all. I can give you an example. Mine is not a fractional, but I have a house in Dana Point. I rented to a wonderful couple. Everything checked out. And they moved in, and my neighbor called me next to the property and said, did you know your tenant's operating a bed and breakfast out of your house? I said, you're kidding me. There's no way.
You so much.
I found out, and they removed what they were doing. I checked Verbo, B&amp;B. There is no requirement that an owner prove ownership when they rent or sublet a fractional or rental of any kind. They don't provide, they don't ask for proof of ownership. Just thought you should be aware of that.
Thank you very much. And I am going to be keeping us right on time today with those two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kathy Cost. My husband and I are the proud 1/8 deeded owner of a second home at 121 Emerald Avenue on Balboa Island that we bought via the Picasso model. We bought it in June of 2021. My husband and I, we flew down here from the Bay Area just to have this discussion with you. So we really wanted to give you a little bit of perspective of who we are and how we perceive the Picasso model, since we are part of it. So I am recently retired. I was a partner at Deloitte. I now sit on the board of two public companies. And I'm the audit committee chair of a company in Irvine called BioAmerica. We've been coming to Newport Beach, I specifically, for 40 years. And for the last 25 years, we've been renting or using VRBO to rent homes either in Balboa Peninsula or on the island. And our dream was always to have a second home on the island. Like so many properties on the island, we, that are co-owned or fractional ownership in LLCs, either with family members or friends, we tried to do the same thing. We tried to get a group of people to go in and do our own LLC. But because of the market or whatever people's circumstances, we couldn't quite figure out how to do it. And then we saw the Picasso house for sale. So we actually pursued that. And one of the reasons we like the Picasso model is because, it is because the eight owners own the house directly in a deeded co-ownership partnership agreement. Picasso owns nothing. They brokered the deal and are our service providers as a house management company. If we don't like Picasso's service, we can fire them. So, but our experience with Picasso has actually been outstanding. They prioritize keeping the house upgraded and in top condition.
Thank you very much.
Actually spent over 30 grand last year upgrading our house.
Thank you so much.
We'd love to be your neighbors.
Hello, and thank you. I'm the other half. I'm Randy. I'm recently retired also. And we have a history here. Kathy mentioned coming down for 40 years. Our family moved out here from New York, and the first place we lived was Newport Beach. Eventually, moving into Claremont, but every summer vacation was here. I spent a lot of time in high school and in college at The Wedge, probably too much time. Going out on fishing boats, we've rented over the years, supporting the community, rented every Duffy place you could do it, all these kind of things. It's been a part of our life. My parents lived here in their retirement for six years. It's been a second home to me since I was 15, when we moved out here. So the ability to buy a place in, through Picasso in Newport has been phenomenal. Some of the differences, it is not a timeshare. It is not a transient thing. We own it. By the way, we spend upwards of $1 million for it. It's not a borrowed $20,000 timeshare where it is a transient thing. It is not a timeshare. This commitment to the community and the money we spend creates a sense of ownership and pride in the home and pride in the community. We participate in everything we can, whether it's hanging banners from on our street during the Fourth of July weekend or what have you. But we very much take a different view of ownership and pride in that. And that's, I think, one of the key differences between this, what we're doing through Picasso, and our ownership there versus a timeshare. It's got to be taken into account. It's not a small investment. You're not coming in for a weekend to throw a big party. It's our home, and we live there. Six months, six weeks a year, maybe more if we buy a second share. But it is not a timeshare. And the attitude towards ownership is far different. So I'd ask you to take that into account, that we're not there just to throw a house party or rent it out. So these are big things I think you need to consider in who is owning it, who are those neighbors? So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable Mayor Blom and the City Council, I'm Gary Cruz. I live on Newport Island. Heartfelt speech. Don't worry about it. Basically, I'm pulling out a few topics from my speech. Support of Nancy Gardner, what she said. We're in an R2 zone. It's not the, it's not the zone. It's the people that live in the zone. It's not the number behind. It's the R. It's a residential. That's one point. The other point is, we tried code enforcement for STRs. It's not what we wanted. It didn't work, and it won't work now. It's not what residents want. Finally, when you look at the definitions of timeshares and try to fit fractional ownership, I think you better be real careful and dot your i's. I saw the number 12 up there, and I'm seeing, Newport Beach is a target. And I'm seeing lots of things come in. There's a company called Incognito or Happy Landing, membership vacation homes for rent. So we need, you need to embrace all of those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Blom, council members. My name is Max Gardner. I have the privilege of actually living directly across the street from the couple that just spoke a minute ago at 201 Emerald Avenue. Unfortunately, we've never met, which is, I think, indicative of kind of the message that I would send you as relative to how these folks are able to be part of the community. We've lived there for seven, almost eight years now. And so I do think there's a difference. There are very nice people that live in the Picasso house now. I could tell you some worse stories about ones that have been there before. And part of, part of my message to you is, if you adopt the number one, please don't forget number two, because I suspect there will be some grandfathering, as there should be, for people that already own a house in this perspective. And I'd like to make sure that there are rules and regulations for how the management companies operate and, more importantly, how we can communicate with them on issues that arise at the house. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Denise Oberman. I'm here on behalf of the Leadership Committee. And I just wanted to make a couple of points. I sent a correspondence on our collective behalf on March 13th. First of all, it is important to have a definition of fractional homeownership businesses and the fact they're commercial. We are convinced that there is language that can be adopted and incorporated into an ordinance which provides clarity and therefore fairness as to what is a commercial activity and what is an intra-family or close element between friends. Language is available in my correspondence for your consideration. Secondly, the residential zones. It's come up already several times. And I think it's important for the council and staff to realize that the residential zones do include more than R1. R1.5, R2, those are zones where people, families, that are permanently here and part of the community, they have homes. So to do anything that would trifurcate that and only protect R1 is probably not appropriate, given our current land use. Secondly, enforcement. I do want to reiterate that while some of the impacts are similar to short-term rentals, the ability to enforce and provide a remedy to the residents from disturbances and nuisances is not there. You cannot revoke a permit with somebody that has a property right or an application or anything else. And it's already been said, there's a stress on the system. Lastly, in the language, I did notice in the draft language that we just received today from staff that there is, there are some comments about having a minimum of at least 100 units or part of a 300 unit. I'm not certain what that is in reference to, probably development of a project. But given our issues with housing, both our true market needs, what does that mean? I'd like clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Next speaker, please. Perfect. We can use both of those marks.
Mayor Blom, City Council, my name is Rustall. I think you know me. I've been in sort of this situation for about 18 months, including a legal letter, a position that I think has been put forth again on November 10, 2021. So it's been that long. I live next door on the Peninsula Point to a Picasso home. And a couple of things, Mayor Blom, I heard your appeal, and I hear it. I don't need to make a long statement here and rehash old things. But with respect to some of the comments around the permanency or the desire for people to be here, this home next door to me was sold, eight units sold about a year ago. Today, if you go on the website, two of those units are for resale. So they turn over. Money is made when they turn over. So I want to make sure, I've resigned myself to the fact that there's always been grandfathering provision and language discussed at the city council level. So to the extent that's going to happen, I agree with the gentleman that said, we at least need some mechanism to make sure that this ongoing behavior or ongoing situation is remedied to some degree or managed to some degree. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Maureen Cotton, resident and president of the Central Newport Beach Community Association. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, city staff. I appreciate Jaime and Simone's efforts at drafting language that could, that is serving as the preference. We are in full support of the preferred recommendation. And as Mr. Moser mentioned earlier, there's probably some room for adding language that will ban advertising on fractional homes for sale in Newport Beach, like they've implemented in St. Helena, Sonoma, and Carmel by the Sea. Preventing the sale for use that will hopefully not be permitted seems a lot easier in all parties than trying to unwind the sale after it has happened. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and honorable City Council. My name is Andre Jones. I'm a local employee with Picasso. I'm reading a statement on behalf of Roy Menderin, president of one of our vendor partners, Silver Star Sound and Electric. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion with you and share my experience as a local business owner. With Picasso, I am, I ask that you consider and how important the co-ownership is in supporting a local business like mine and to work with Picasso to draft sensible regulations for co-ownership that interject resources into a local economy in Newport Beach. As a proud owner of Silver Star and Electric, we have the privilege of servicing audio, video, and electric needs all throughout Orange County. Our service is located in Newport Beach, giving us direct client interaction in companies like Picasso, whether it is upgrading larger homes, automation systems, or servicing their current audio visual. Silver Star is always there to support neighbors in Newport Beach. Not only is it a friendly neighborhood owners that keeps Silver Star in business, but also relationships with property management companies such as Picasso. Silver Star has begun working with Picasso in June of 2021. They reached out to our office at a time where the business was slow and still rolling off of COVID. They, since then, we have consistently serviced six of Picasso's Newport locations and are hoping to continue to acquire more. Thanks for the reliable accounts payable. We've received funding on a timely manner. They have a wonderful management team that is sure to stay organized when it comes to scheduling and making it easier on Silver Star. We are thankful that Picasso continues to support small local business owners such as ours and keep... as ours and keep our services active in the city we love. As a Newport Beach residential autovisual installation business, we hope to continue relationships with Picasso.
Thank you very much.
Just real short, I'm a maintenance manager. I've met a lot of the residents of Newport Beach. I've gained really nice relationships, built bonds with, with all the homeowners, and it's a pleasure working with, with you all and working in your neighborhood.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. Thanks for this opportunity to kind of speak in front of you tonight. My name is Jonathan Ash, and I am grateful for the opportunity to be here. I am a owner at, a one-eighth owner at 506 West Oceanfront and have been since, since June of this last year. And I'm going to admit, I'm getting quite an education tonight about the, the different pros and cons of this type of model. But I thought maybe I would just kind of come up and just share with you like why, why we want to kind of, you know, be fractional owners and be part of the fabric of this community. For us, our family has a very long tradition of traveling the world together. We are a herd. And as, as parents get older, you know, our parents don't have the ability to travel anymore, and we, we live in the Los Angeles area up near Pasadena. And without the ability to go on our exotic, you know, adventures every year, we wanted a place where the family can kind of get together and have roots, have a place to celebrate and, and enjoy ourselves in such a beautiful environment. And that was part of our decision to kind of purchase with Picasso. And at the end of the day, what has this given us? I mean, we've got this amazing second home. We've got a place where grandpa, son, and grandson can throw the football on the beach. It's a place where we can go fishing off the pier. However, I haven't caught anything but seaweed and crabs, so your fish are safe. You know, we love to go walking on, on the beach, and I think our dog is becoming like the mayor of like lifeguard tower six because he greets everybody he meets there. At the end of the day, this is something we value and we cherish, and we'd like for it to continue. We are, feel like we're homeowners. We feel like we're part of the community. We pay our taxes, we go to the local restaurants, we contribute to the local economy, and we'd love to do it, you know, forevermore if we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Blom, City Council. Jim Miller. Almost every city has a timeshare ordinance to prohibit hotel-like activity in residential areas. These cities are now rewriting their ordinances to include those that would attempt to circumvent our laws and regulations by renaming their properties as fractional ownerships. When eight investors share their time, they can let their friends and family use the residence, it is still time-sharing. Picasso has a competing fractional ownership business, many of them, whereas anyone can buy a share in a 60,000-share house for as little as $10. Ownership, $10. Picasso is leading the way. Other fractional ownership models give you back part of your purchased share for up to three years if you want to sell back your ownership shares. In the meantime, you can let all your friends and family use any of the company's properties for their parties. Picasso turns established homes into virtual hotels, except without paying transient occupancy tax like other short-term lodging. By circumventing these fees and regulations, Picasso is depriving Newport Beach of tax dollars. More importantly, it is destroying our community-friendly neighborhoods by trying to escape the zoning restrictions cities put in place to curtail hotel-like activities in residential neighborhoods. Regardless of how similar or different they are from timeshares, today's arrangements are called things like fractionals or condo hotels to divert attention from the problems they cause as timeshares. Call them what you will, but loud partying drunks are still drunks with behavior not appropriate.
Thank you very much.
Quiet residential neighbors.
Wonderful. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for your time. Sorry. It seems like the, the fate of this is kind of already, I want to thank the City Council for rightfully defining Picasso as a timeshare and helping to protect our local communities. I, I normally wouldn't have spoke tonight, but my wife couldn't be here tonight, and she's incredibly proud that our children are fourth-generation Newport Beach residents. And we are just so, so dedicated to ensure that this is a safe and happy and friendly place for us and our family. We're proud members of the BPPA, and, and the one thing we notice is that, you know, fractional ownership tourism, you don't get a fractional child in a school. You don't get a fractional child in the scout troop. You don't get fractional people at church. This isn't about being pro-timeshare or anti-timeshare or pro-business or anti-business. It's about not allowing a company to ignore the existing intent of our rules, which are intended to preserve the, the natures of our community that are a treasure that should be protected. The moment you commoditize a treasure like that, you lose it. People should visit here all the time, but six weeks is not a life here. Those aren't residents. And I just really encourage you by supporting this measure to ensure that we continue to ensure that residential, resident, people that live in residential areas are accountable, they have an individual commitment to the greater good, and are here to preserve what makes Newport Beach special. So, again, I, I think that there's a place for Picasso, and that's in the commercial zones where they're intended to be. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Sutton. I own a home in the 700 block on Orchid Avenue. My home is in a group of homes that were single-family, even though they're in an R2 neighborhood, and I've watched the neighborhood change as new requirements for increased dwelling units, et cetera. I was next to a short-term rental. It was a nightmare. I don't even want to get into what happened in that rental next to my house. But what I will say is, now that we have the new housing ordinance laws as far as increased dwelling units, and R2 becomes an R4 with ADUs. So as this gets defined, it needs to be very clear, the city's direction with respect to timeshares or any type of a Picasso model. Other cities have already approved ordinances banning timeshares and fractional interests. And there are websites such as StopPicassonow.com, you can see all the cities that have already instituted action along this line, including legal verbiage. What I just asked the City Council is, before we get too far into defining it, that we just make sure it doesn't provide loopholes for someone to come in the backend, because we should be able to define some type of reasonable moratorium on this so it stops, because the citizens obviously don't want fractional ownership in our community. And we appreciate your consideration and thoughts on this.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Katie Sandvig. I'm a local Picasso employee, and I'm going to be reading a statement on behalf of Picasso owner Christopher Looney. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the council today via Picasso employee. My name is Chris Looney, and my family of five and I both live in Irvine and in Newport Beach. We love both homes. We feel a deep connection to Newport. Members of my mother's family, the Schneiders and the Shipkies, have lived in Newport Beach since the 1950s, and they've been part of the fabric of the community for more than seven decades. I'm reaching out to you about the decision I believe that you will have to make on March 14th regarding shared ownership in Newport Beach. I'd like my voice to be strong, opinion that shared ownership is good for Newport Beach. Our family owns a one-eighth share of the home on Oceanfront, which we purchased nearly a year ago. Since that time, we've enjoyed everything Newport Beach has to offer: great restaurants, great beaches, great water activities, deep sea fishing, whale watching, beach sports, and so much more. We're great neighbors, and our home is maintained in pristine condition. We're deeded owners, so we care deeply about the home and about the neighborhood. We, along with our co-owners, never rent out the home. The issues that arise with rentals are not the issues that exist with Picasso. We spend more money at local establishments, between the mayor's table, the Old Spaghetti Factory, Milk and Cookies, City Donuts, Lombardi's Market, Mama D's, and other markets and stores. We're doing our part to support the local community. As a proud Newport Beach owners and concerned residents, I would encourage you to think favorably upon co-ownership in your discussions. Hopefully, my story will be might of many, that you hear the positive influence in the community of residents and owners from the co-ownership model. Since I have a couple extra seconds, I wanted to speak as the regional home manager for the Pacific Southwest. I manage a staff of four throughout Newport and San Diego counties. Tim Ellis, who is our regional or our home manager in Newport, can be here, is on a well-deserved vacation, but he is born and raised in Newport, born at Hoag. He spends a lot of time here. He is proudly representing the community and the owners of Picasso.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and Honorable City Council members. My name is Katie Durham. I am a local Picasso employee and will be reading a statement on behalf of Picasso owner Erin Clark. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I am grateful for the opportunity to address the city council today via Picasso employee. I wanted to write to express my support for Picasso in advance of the city council meeting on March 14th. As a current Picasso owner, we have been very impressed with the company and its true spirit of enhancing communities. The last thing that we would want is to own a home where other co-owners are disruptive or disrespectful to our fellow neighbors. Picasso has been very active in echoing this sentiment, has been, excuse me, and has made clear that there will be consequences as our property management, should these values be violated. We are a family of four and currently maintain our primary residence in Scottsdale. We have greatly enjoyed participating and supporting the community of Newport Beach since we invested into our Picasso in October 2021. Over that period of time, we have spent almost 75 days here and have supported countless local businesses, met new friends and neighbors, and been good citizens. Our daughter plays club soccer, where we travel many weekends of the year, making a full-time vacation home very wasteful. As time goes by and kids age, we anticipate making Newport Beach a bigger and bigger piece of our lives. A few facts, we invested $840,000 into our Picasso at 1703 Plaza del Sur. We pay roughly $2,000 a month in ongoing maintenance, taxes, insurance, utilities, et cetera. We pay more taxes annually than many of those in opposition of Picasso, who are grandfathered in at much lower cost without, excuse me, without current owners like ourselves would not adequately support the community, not to mention our initial investment into the community was also higher. We eat out nearly every meal while in town, rent Duffy boats, shop in local boutiques, et cetera. It is clear our initial and ongoing investment into Newport Beach is far more meaningful than an Airbnb rental or timeshare. As an owner, we want to maintain the sense of community, support our local businesses, and be neighborly. We have met resistance. Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Blom, City Council. Thank you so much for giving us a chance to talk about this very important issue. Thank you also for expressing your feelings about it in advance of this. The only reason I got up, knowing that you felt that way, is because of these representations by these paid employees of Picasso, representing people who, oh gosh, one lives in Irvine and couldn't make it. Seriously. I mean, if you care, I appreciate the owners that are here, and I also appreciate, we all know why they want to live here. We get it. Understand it completely. What they need to understand is how it changes the very fabric of our neighborhood when we have temporary neighbors. Good neighbors, but temporary neighbors.
I will, I will stop the meeting, and no one wants that. Let's just, we're moving forward quickly. Thank you. We're going to respect them all.
Do I have that?
Yeah, you keep going.
Anyway, that is the point. And yes, maybe grandfathering in those who've been sucked in by this, maybe we're stuck with that, but maybe there is some enforcement that maybe when they sell, it has to be divided by the remaining seven, so that eventually it's a single ownership property once again. Anyway, thank you again so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council members. My name is Megan Locata. I am a local Picasso employee, and I'll be reading a statement on behalf of Picasso owner David Atchinson. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the council today via Picasso employee. My name is Devon Atchinson, and together with my husband Dave and two daughters, Lucy 10 and Grace 8, I'm a part-owner via Picasso of a beautiful home in Corona Del Mar. We spend much time considering the idea of fractional ownership, but we were put at ease by the model that Picasso uses, only eight or fewer families sharing a home and building a community. We chose Corona Del Mar because we are in love with your, our city. I grew up going to Newport Beach every week with my mom. Our usual spot was playing on the beach and in the water at 15th Street in Newport, or scrambling over the rocks to get to the secret beach at Corona Del Mar. Dave and I were later married in Christchurch by the Sea and had our wedding reception at Harbord Side Pavilion in 2006, despite the fact that we lived in San Diego at the time. When we moved to Seattle in 2010, we were always looking for a way to be closer to the beach and particularly our favorite beaches of Orange County. Imagine our absolute delight and joy when a beautiful home became, became available via Picasso in Corona Del Mar. We love sharing the beauty of Corona Del Mar, as well as enjoying all of the amazing shops and sites. Our girls have been building sand castles and shuffling away from the stingrays at the little beach at the bottom of Fernleaf. We have a new family tradition of grilled artichokes at Banderas. We learned about monarch butterflies at the Saturday farmer's market and bought some beautiful produce to cook, and frequently get our sugar fix at Bee Candy.
Guys.
We relived my parents' second date at the Rusty Pelican and subsequent dates at Five Crowns. We devoured Sonoran enchiladas at El Cholo, celebrated my 44th birthday at the Quiet Woman, bought bamboo Band-Aids for a skin knee at Mother's, bought souvenirs at Jack's, stretched our legs on Lido Island. And for my family, family time is the number one thing. With school and work, it's a blessing to have a place where the four of us can go and recharge, explore, and play together. Even more important, because my family, my parents, my siblings, their spouses, and their kids all live in Southern California, so being in Orange County means that we get family time. Picasso was allowed to have all of this in our adopted city of Corona Del Mar, and we're grateful to have this gift. We sincerely hope that you will allow more families a way into homeownership in Newport Beach and the surrounding beach areas, so that more families can share in the beauty, the culture, the commerce, and the joy of Newport.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then, before the next speaker starts, I just want to remind you, it's a place of mutual respect, even if we don't agree with the ideas. That's, that's part of what we're here for. So if we could keep cheering, the hollering, the clapping to a minimum, get through this piece, and then we'll move on nice and maturely. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Max, and I am another local Picasso employee, reading a statement on behalf of an owner, Scott Hanson. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, my wife and I own through Picasso a quarter interest in a home on Ocean Boulevard in Corona Del Mar. We reside outside Sacramento and have a second home in Lake Tahoe. What appealed most to us about shared ownership was that we, we could only visit Corona Del Mar a handful of weeks per year and didn't want to buy a vacation home that sat empty most of the time, as our Lake Tahoe home does. When my wife and I stay in our home, we are highly respectful of our neighbors. We never have more than eight people at the house at one time. We never have had any large parties, and we keep our noise down. The businesses in Newport love it when we come to town and make us feel at home. Just about every night, we walk to dinner and have dined at some of the favorite restaurants of everyone here. Our go-to favorites are Ferretti's, CDM, Bungalow, Banderas, Bamboo Bistro, Panini Kebab, Rose Bakery, and Zink Cafe. If we decide, decide to get in our car, we drive to dinner and enjoy the great restaurants on Lido. As far as shopping, my wife spends a lot of time at Fashion Island. We love to spend money when we come to town and help the local businesses thrive. We, along with our partners in our CDM home, have agreed to never rent out the home, so the issue that arises with rentals simply does not happen here. Plus, given that we are all deeded owners to the property, we take great care of the home. Limiting homeownership to the, only those who purchase 100% of the, the home would be a tremendous mistake. Businesses benefit from having homes that people reside in as opposed to empty homes. My wife and I purchased an eighth in our home about 15 months ago. After our first visit, we decided to purchase another eighth in the home. In time, we may decide to purchase another eighth in the home. We really do love the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blom and the City Council, my name is Karen Carlson, and I'm a multi-decade resident here in Corona Del Mar. I would like to speak, first of all, to say thank you for polling the council at the beginning, because I've been sick to my stomach for the last couple of weeks, especially since watching the Planning Commission meeting. And grateful to hear you all being so reasonable. And the preferred recommendation, if anybody hasn't read it, please do. I think we all feel that that is very sensible. I don't, I've only a couple times heard the word moratorium, and I would really urge some sort of a moratorium on new fractional owner places. We've jumped already to 12. I bet there's probably more than that right now. They'll probably be grandfathered in, and that's, you can't do anything about it, but at the Planning Commission meeting, the Picasso representative very blithely mentioned, she felt, there should be 500 permits in the R1 district. I can't even comprehend that. So let's think carefully about it. I agree, it should be considered timeshare and hopefully not part of our wonderful Corona Del Mar Newport Beach. Del Mar Newport Beach area, but let's not open Pandora's box and let these people in, and then we can't shut it down again. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. My name's Lee Pearl with Balboa Island, and I'm going to take a different approach. I'm kind of very proud about the way the community has come together. I walked through the parking lot, and I read license plate frames coming into the meeting this evening, and I can assure you, all of your villages are represented by the leaders and, and members that live in those neighborhoods. And I think they've done a good job of expressing their views with correspondence emails, and I'm sure phone calls. And I'm also very proud of the Council, because I think this is the first big decision. I think it's going to go in a positive way for the community. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Good afternoon. Stephen Baston. I live on the Peninsula. Thank you for your time. I want to introduce you to a couple of my neighbors. Dave Archie, Kim Bibb, Joe Huber. They're neighbors that I've been down there for three years. I have not been born in Newport Beach. I came down there, bought a home. I walked my granddaughter. I know them. I'm going to, I'm going to reiterate what Joe Stapleton said. Let's not commercialize our neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. Let's keep it that way. That's all I think.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Blom, and members of the City Council, Debbie Stevens, resident of Corona Del Mar, as well as part of the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. First of all, I do appreciate the comments that you guys have made. It looks like it's going in the right direction, but a reminder, if it smells like a duck, acts like a duck, and looks like a duck, it's a duck. So whether we're talking short-term lodging, timeshares, or fractional, they all act the same and have the same impacts. This is a quality-of-life issue, and it affects our beaches and coastal areas the most. As Councilmember Avery said, the pressures from the state have been great, between ADUs, between the demand to create more housing per the RENA numbers. You know, some of this, we really don't have a whole lot of control over, but we have a control over this, and I'd really like to see this, you know, continue with the ban on using this in residential areas, keep it in the commercial areas. And we support the preferred recommendation, but just as a follow-up, and I know that there's a lot of people here, and I appreciate you guys trying to get through everything, but we kind of thought we were here last September, and it slipped six months again. So that's partly why you're seeing quite so many people. So we appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Carrie Hanson. I'm the President of the Balboa Island Improvement Association. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council members, staff, I appreciate you giving, giving us an opportunity to speak. I'm not speaking for the Association, or particularly the Board of Directors, but I do have some interesting information. In our database, we have 1,900 people, over 1,900 people, that we sent an email out to recently for a call to action regarding this issue. And normally, our people are very complacent. I've never seen so many responses. It was like a landslide of responses that I received and some of the other members of our board. So I kind of wanted to capitalize on some of the things that they said. Visitors from other cities do not have the same respect as owners have when they have a vested interest. It destroys the fabric of the island and the city. A fractional ownership is exactly like a timeshare. And the thing that was interesting that I heard when I was sitting back there, we had some people from Picasso speaking, and representing people that had invested, and those people were not even here to testify. They sent somebody else, and that certainly is not the fabric on Newport Beach. This reduces the number of home sales in the future. Turnover is very important. Real estate sales drives our economy. This is interesting. It cheats the city out of bedtacks. And I'm thinking, well, why would I care about that? Why care about that? Because that pays for part of our infrastructure, and that's very important to the people that own property on the island. Obviously, it's a parking problem, just like the Airbnbs. And the last thing I wasn't going to mention, because in Picasso, Picasso's agreement, they do not allow rentals. That's great, not to allow it. Who's going to police it? How many are we going to have? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Ben Roth, and I live in Corona Del Mar, and I live right adjacent to a Picasso home. So I'm right on Fernleaf, and it's right on Ocean and Fernleaf. And I, I guess they've been there probably about two years, and I've never had one bit of communication with them, other than the fact of when they keep backing into my wall. Just, you know, that, that's really it. But, you know, I look at it, and there's so many friends in the neighborhood, so many, the, the fabric in the neighborhood is so tight. And that's one thing I love about Newport Beach. It's that you meet so many people. You come across, just walking along and so on, that there is no interaction with anybody in our community with the Picasso group. And, and that, that's, it just weakens it. Then if you go and proceed and say, okay, quality of life, you know, what happens as well? We all look out for each other as well. If you see somebody prowling around the house, looking around, you call. Picasso homeowners don't know this. They don't know anybody in the community. So there's never any communication. It could impact crime eventually. You look at the value of the homes. If, if there were Picasso homes all up and down our street, even if it just made it to where there are 13 homes on our street between Sea View and Ocean, and if, let's say, a few of those sold to Picasso, think of what happens in regards to communicating that, because it's, there's a negative impact in regards to how people look at it. Will that impact the value of homes? I'm not sure. But I think the main thing really is the fact that I appreciate what you all do, and it's, you know, you guys serve and make life better for people, and I love that and appreciate it. And this is about the masses. It's about the main group of people here, not the few with the Picasso homes. And, and it's just something that I just, I'm sure that you're going to make the right decision going forward on this. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm glad to say I'm one of his neighbors, and I do talk to him. Just a couple quick things. I live on Fernleaf as well. The city has done a smart thing over the years, limiting short-term rentals. And if you think about it, an STR is a short-term rental. A Picasso is an STR, short-term resident. It's the same thing. I live across from a Picasso, and I have two short-term rentals on our street. They're the same. You know, folks show up, they enjoy the weekend, and I understand why they want to come to Corona Del Mar. I wanted to come to Corona Del Mar. I mean, it's a great, it's a great place to live, but I think at the end of the day, STRs, they don't vote. They're not here. They don't vote. They don't vote for you. They're here to enjoy the neighborhood, and I, and I can appreciate that. But, you know, we're here, we live here, and I doubt very much, and if you think about it, everybody who came up here and said they don't like this, they all vote. The ones who came up and said, we love it, they don't live here, and they don't vote. And they probably wouldn't want me in their neighborhood either, and I don't blame them. But thank you for, thank you for your considerations, and just keep in mind, too, like, Picasso will not be forever. Like, some, are they going to be around 50 years from now, 100 years from now? Well, Newport Beach will be, but I don't, I don't know that the company Picasso will, so just make sure we're careful what we're investing in.
Thank you. Next speaker.
All right. Get ready to groom. My name's Thomas Palasrini. I am a local Picasso employee, reading a letter on behalf of one resident who couldn't be here. Good evening, Mayor. Honorable City Council, my name is Thomas, local Picasso employee, and it is a pleasure for you guys to have me today. My wife, I'm reading a letter on behalf of one of our residents, Steve Hayes. My wife Linda and I are both 62. We have three adult children and one grandchild, and another one on the way. For many years, we had vacation at beaches on East Coast, but after our middle son and our wife were transferred to Southern California for work, we found ourselves being dragged into the California beaches, warm weather, endless things to do. In particular, we fell in love with the friendly people of the, the restaurants, the shops, and Lido Marina Village, and the convenience of the local pavilion's grocery store. We, like you, agree that short-term rentals aren't the most well-kept properties, and we have guests that don't care about them, and how they leave their own properties, and we understand how this impacts the neighborhood, and it's the same reason that we would never buy a rental car. So that's why about six months ago, we made the decision to invest as a homeowner in Picasso here in Newport Beach, and we didn't rent it out, just, and we don't rent it out to make a profit. We did it for our family. Like you, we want to live in a home that has high standards, is well-maintained, and only allows for people to stay in the house and to have a vested interest in the property. The owners. Since our purchase, we have gladly paid property taxes, sales taxes, rental car taxes. We frequent local establishment stores, enjoy riding our bikes up and down the coast, and have had the opportunity to play both pickleball and golf with some very warm and welcoming local people. That's why we were surprised to hear about the uproar, the fractional ownership model of 10 or so homes is caused within the community. Unlike the 1,500 approved short-term rentals, seven of those are on our street. We want what's best for our community, are more than willing to pay our share of taxes to make sure the local infrastructure schools are not only maintained, but as time goes on, we won't and can't rent it out. In our case, and I'm still working, we honestly both are looking forward to the next several years as a trial run, to see if we have more of a long-term presence in North Newport Beach that we can share with our children and grandchildren as we go old. So the next time around, I'd be more than happy to introduce you to my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and Council Members. My name is Gina Cruz from Newport Island. I've just got a couple of quick points to make. One is, I noticed that we've really only mentioned Picasso as though they're the pinnacle of everything, and I think we've got to be aware that maybe other operators for fractional homeownership may not be of that standard. So I just think we should ease up a little bit on Picasso themselves a little bit, and say, you know, it's a generalization on the fractional ownership. However, there's a couple of points I wanted to make. One, they said it was, they'd helped on the ordinances in good faith. There's only, I believe, from the presentation, 12 houses currently owned by Picasso, yet many people here tonight, speaking on behalf of Picasso, have said they're not rented out. We came to a city meeting, I believe it was in September last year, where another resident brought evidence saying, here's an advertisement for a rental that is a Picasso homeownership. I've got one on my phone that I took off the internet. You've got younger people on your staff who can probably look up and calculate, out of 12 houses, how many violations are already going on, that everybody professes isn't happening, and that they won't do. You've only got 12. In good faith, they wanted a cap of 500. Now times that by however many visits you've got a year, by however many people, by that number, and that's the potential of problems you can get. So I just think we should look at it and just be aware that we do have issues with it, even just on the 12. And the last thing I want to say is, everybody has dreams. I totally respect everybody's dream of wanting to live in a fantastic place. Why would you not? But everybody's dreams are equal. It may not be a monetary investment, but I have an elderly relative who lives on Newport Island and who's resided there for nearly 40 years. Her dream is to live in peace and tranquility, to feel secure, to know who the people are next door to her, and to know who's coming and going, so she can sleep at night. I don't think that's much of a dream to be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Monica Crockman. I've been living on the Balboa Peninsula since 1984. My husband lived there since 1969. And I'm sitting here, and I'm listening to all this, and I feel blessed that I've lived that long on the Balboa Peninsula, and I wonder when we're going to change from the Balboa Peninsula to the Balboa Peninsula Resort. I mean, that's how it sounds. I mean, I can understand that people appreciate how beautiful it is. I've been living down there for over 40 years, and I'm, it's wonderful. It's beautiful. But I do know my neighbors. I know my elderly neighbor next door. I know when she needs help, when I see it's dark. I know Carol. She's 92 years old. I know, I know my neighbors. You come down here for six weeks. I appreciate that you love my home. I appreciate it. I love it, too. But do we really destroy a community and make it affordable for the elite to be down there for six weeks, spending a million, $2 million, being able to afford it? Or are we going to fight for a community? And a community of people who know each other, are there for each other? And, I mean, I hear all these, and I appreciate the employes, Picasso employes. I mean, I'm sure you like me. I don't know you, but you're blaming that you know the neighborhood, and they're so friendly, and we interact. No, you don't. You come in, do your job, and then you leave. So don't tell me you interact with the neighborhood. Come on. I mean, this is an insult. But nevertheless, like I said, I've been fortunate to live on the, I've been living there for 40 years. I love it. I also have a home in Vail. I saw something in there with the, and I've seen how that little village got destroyed by resorts coming in, buying it up, and people having to move out, cashed in, they had to, and moved out because they couldn't afford it.
Thank you very much.
Is that what's going to happen to us? Balboa Peninsula Resort?
Thank you. Any other speakers? Please, come right up.
Hi. My name is Amber Snyder, and I am part of the Newport Beach Fire Safe Council, and also on the CDM Foundation Alumni Association. Please save our neighborhoods. Please watch out for the children who live next to these homes that might have special needs. We don't know these people who live next door, and it affects my son, because he does have a tendency to wander. And when he does wander into a home that has people coming in and out on a weekly or monthly basis, it affects our family. It is incredibly hard to live and be next to or adjacent to any of this, and so I urge you to please save our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Carmen Rosen. I'm in the Balboa Peninsula resident. To the fractional owners that are here, and maybe the ones that are watching from wherever they are, when they say they are not transient, they are transient. They may have the right to occupy the property six weeks in a 365-day period. However, Picasso website says that it stays are between two and 14 days. That's transient. Regarding the comments about R1 versus R2 before, Picasso recommend a cap of 500 in the R1 zone, I guess unlimited to the R2 zone. So Corona Del Mar, for example, has many condos, many lots that have been split into two condos, so now Picasso could buy two condos and has 16 owners instead of eight in a building. So the negative effect is even worse, where you have R2 zoning. For the fractional owner that lives in Irvine, well, sell your home in Irvine and move to Newport Beach? 100%. You know, it's close to your job. If you can go to work from Irvine, you can go to work from Newport Beach, and then you really become a member of this community full-time. Please raise your hand if you are saying no to Picasso and any other fractional ownership, please. So now it's even more visual. The assumption that they are taking over empty homes is not true. We have new people moving here full-time, and that's what we want. And what I would like to ask is, please, in the September 13 meeting, we had a lot of people here, residents, and the understanding of the residents at the end of the meeting is that the City Council was going to take positive action and expeditions action to stop this. And then it went sideways, somehow the, it went to the Planning Commission, let's regulate instead of stop. So I ask you, please, this time, no need to go to the planning commissioner, as it was established, and get this ordinance done promptly.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council staff, I'm confused about one thing. We elect our public officials to save the community and give us a quality of life. Picasso has beautiful writers, I'd like to hire a couple for my own company, but the bottom line is this, it is disruptive to every single community. I would like to know if anyone, I know, by the way, Joe, congratulations on your engagement, and happy birthday. Second is, it's time to put a stop to this. We keep coming back and back and back and back. There's so many other issues that we have to address. The main thing, we're here for one subject, is the community, the quality of life. We all know, if any of you live next to any of these houses, in and out, and the cleaning people and coming back, the parking, who's going to monitor this? We don't even have enough, we don't have enough Newport police to monitor the problems that are going on, on now. Why are we adding these extra problems? We have to put a stop to this once and for all. Please, we want our community. It's beautiful, it's comfort. Come down and visit. But when you have businesses come in and can really mess up a whole neighborhood by the action, the people, the crime, the litter, we don't have enough fracture, people to take care of all this. We actually need the city council to get together and protect the residents that elected you to be there for our quality of life. It's really important. It's not a matter of, this one walks in, Picasso has beautiful writers, they come up. Half of them don't even live here, if any. I've lived next to, short-term, it is an absolute horror story. It's not quiet and peaceful and cookies and bubble gum and walking their dog. That's not what really happens. I've lived next there for 30 some-odd years, and I want the city council to really back and provide us the quality of life we elected you all to bring to us. I don't know how this all started, but I'm not going to get into that. Just look at these residents. We're here asking you to protect our quality of life.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Pauri Doshi, and I work for Picasso in their Public Affairs team. I wanted to start by thanking you, the Community Development Department, the City Attorney's Office, and the Planning Commission for the time and consideration each of you have devoted towards studying co-ownership in the city. We all understand that co-ownership is part of this community's past, present, and future. Co-ownership is not a group home, it is not short-term lodging, and it is not a timeshare. Instead, co-ownership is a valuable, protected property right, no different than any other form of property ownership in Newport Beach. At our last meeting together in September of 2022, the city council met and agreed that a compromise solution that respected property rights, acknowledged the city's history as a vacation destination, and protected neighborhoods, was in the best interest of our community. Since then, we have met with Simone Georges and his staff, the Planning Commission and its subcommittee on several occasions to discuss a potential compromise solution. We took to the, we took the laboring oar to develop an ordinance that mirrors the city's short-term rental, short-term lodging regulations. We even proposed a cap on the total number of co-owned homes in the R1 zone. I understand that number was received with, you know, a lot of reactions. It was really meant to just be a starting point, a placeholder, or something that we could all kind of discuss and further negotiate. At the last Planning Commission meeting, we heard many viewpoints. What we did not hear was a consensus or a preferred approach. Thus, we are very surprised to see in the staff report for this item, a so-called preferred approach to reclassify co-ownership as a timeshare. I suspect other homeowners within the city that hold their property in an LLC, trust, or other form of ownership that allows multiple owners would be surprised to hear that this city is reclassifying their ownership interest as a timeshare. It is not the government's place to decide who can or cannot own a home, nor is it appropriate to treat some homeowners differently than others. People have the right to own a home and enjoy that home. We stand before you today and again state our desire to work with the city to develop common sense regulations. We believe the ordinance we submitted is an excellent starting point for good faith discussions, and we urge the city to continue this item and allow us to continue talks so we can come up with regulations that work for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? If you are planning on speaking on this item, please come up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Max Johnson, and before I continue, I have a petition that, as of this, of me speaking, has over 105 signatures of local residents that couldn't make the meeting, and actually some that are in attendance. And signatures continue to happen with this petition. So I'm printing out the names, and I can provide them to Leilani after I speak. But in my personal opinion, so, I reside in District 1 on the Balboa Peninsula, in the Balboa Peninsula Point community. And it's ironic, our district representative got up when, you know, we're speaking on this matter still, but I just have to also specify that the employee that just spoke before me came to our Planning Commission meeting where I also spoke, and as other residents said, requested a minimum of 500 Picasso homes in the city of Newport, and also previously shared. Picasso is only one of four-plus companies currently operating in Newport with FHO. So 500 times 5, 6, just imagine, I mean, a minimum, we'd become not just a STR Mecca, but FHO Mecca. So I don't think that this is another type of nuisance that we want to have occur within Newport, with short-term rentals, you know, previously out of control, you know, thankfully we now have regulation for those. So another important thing I was going to mention, as previously stated with the TOT taxes not being paid by these FHO individuals, is the fact that the city receives the TOT to help offset the cost of police and fire services. So when police and fire are called to these residences, they aren't paying taxes that contribute towards these types of services. So I urge the council to please vote in support of all the residents that are against FHO. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blum, council members, staff. Jim Maloney, Chair of the Balboa and Preservation Association, the VIPA. I'm going to speak, I think, I think the people who buy the fractions are very nice. I think the people who live here are very nice. I'm just going to speak from a sort of a separate distinct position, which is, when you take a lot with a house and you divide it into eight fractions, what they do is, they tear the house down, they build a new house, and they sell the fractions for 800,000 or 900,000. That increases in the short term the value of the property to more than you could sell it as one. But the problem is, from a BIPA perspective, this results in acceleration of homes being torn down and built up into large cubes to maximize square foot. So from the BIPA's perspective, I would just say, this will just lead to an acceleration of the tearing down and removal of the quaint cottages that we have on Balboa Island, on the peninsula, and elsewhere by the coastline. So I'm just speaking, if someone's going to put up 500 Picasso new homes, they're not going to be the cute, small cottages that we have today. They're going to be big, square cubes that fit as many people in there. And I just think that in the short term, it may generate more revenues through the sale of a home for a higher price. If you do the math, take 800,000, 900,000, and multiply it by eight, it's a couple million more than the house would normally sell for. In the short term, you get your value and your taxes, but in the long term, I think it's somewhat destructive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Perfect. Seeing none, we're going to bring it back up here.
Mayor, I need to clarify one point. So Mayor Portim O'Neal asked me whether or not this needed to go back to Planning Commission or not. And like you, I'm kind of anxious to move this along as well without too many more hearings. But normally, you can modify a recommendation of the Planning Commission under the code, but that's provided that there is a public hearing at the Planning Commission. And because we haven't had a public hearing at the Planning Commission, it actually will need to go back to the Planning Commission for consideration. And that's a municipal code requirement, and I apologize for making that mistake.
So, so I, let me ask this, because there is a timing aspect to, to the, to this as well. So Title 20 can get modified pretty quickly, but if I recall correctly, Title 21 has a timing aspect as well. So I knew we wouldn't be able to get back at like the next meeting, but what's, what's the title, what's the 21? And can we get, let me, maybe two questions. With Title 21, what's the requirement? And then can we do a Planning Commission meeting within the timeframe of that, that requirement?
So under Title 21, there's, there's also a legal requirement that it has to be, the proposed change has to be available for 60 days before you adopt it. So I think this can go, you know, pretty quickly, but that's the second requirement, that there's 60 days before you adopt it, it's got to be available to the public.
Okay, so, so if we put it out soon, does the 60 days get triggered by the moment we put it out, or is it the 60 days after the Planning Commission?
Yeah, as soon as you put it out.
Okay. Okay. All right. I mean, that's as fast as we can go anyway, so, all right. I mean, that's, got it, okay.
Great. And I know everyone's anxious out there. That's kind of why we wanted to address this piece as well. And I'm going to go over to Councilmember Wigan in just a second, but I do want to say a couple of things, that this was a very new thing that we were dealing with in September. And we are not emotional in Newport Beach, we're logical, and we want to win when we work to do these things. And that's why it takes time. And, you know, I spend a lot of time in the private sector where it doesn't take time. And when I'm in the public sector, I'm sometimes amazed at how much time it takes, but this is the reality, and it is a lot better. I know it's not ideal, but it's better if we make sure we do everything correctly. It ensures the success of the things we do up here. And so it's not to stifle what you want, it's not to adjust the will, it's to make sure that we have the strength to move forward in all the best ways. So I did want to address that before we move forward. Councilmember Wigan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for those comments. It wasn't what I was going to talk about, so I appreciate that you added that. On the staff report, it mentioned from the September 13, 2020 meetings, that was a study of 22 jurisdictions found, and it said, and I'm asking Simone and Jaime maybe for, maybe Aaron would chime in too, but it said 15 classify these properties as a form of timeshare. So of the 15, when they did that or had done that, is there a mechanism that those cities had for enforcement once they were prohibited? I heard some comments kind of earlier in the conversation that said, you know, what would be, what would we be up to, you know, making sure that once we do prohibit the practice, that they continue to be monitored or enforced? And are those other cities, do they have a mechanism in place? And then secondly, you know, those that are grandfathered in those homes on Picasso that already exist, you know, would we be able to use, say, the alternative recommendations that the Planning Commission put together to make sure that they adhere to the rules and requirements similar to what we do for our short-term lodging permits? And even further, would we be able to recapture any potential TOTs that those grandfathered Picasso homes would need to generate? You know, should we kind of consider them short-term rentals moving forward since they are grandfathered in?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Wigan. So once we bring back the ordinance to the council, and we get it adopted and get through coastal, as far as from the enforcement standpoint, we have an enforcement procedure in our ordinance, in our municipal code. So if we're aware of any type of fractional housing taking place, we would have to follow our enforcement process, which is usually, it's a notice of violation. And that's something our enforcement staff handles. And so it is through enforcement, it's already documented in our municipal code. With those properties, those 12 that we have, at this point, the only direction we have from the council that we're, we assume right now is to adopt a change in the timeshare definition. So we would look at that as the 12 as just going to be grandfathered. We can't extract any TOT from them, they're not, we're not looking at those as short-term lodging or transient, as far as from a hotel aspect. We know that is maybe considered a timeshare, maybe it is considered transient, but we don't have anything to enforce the TOT side. So at this point, what I'm hearing from the council, it appears that we'll look at those as more of a grandfather, the 12 have been sold and they're operating. But I haven't heard anything from the council to, to change that.
But so should we discuss that? We could add some regulations to the grandfathered.
I would defer to the mayor and the rest of the council if that's something that you want to take. I do think, just a recommendation, I think there's, the consensus is to change that definition. I think that's the low-hanging fruit for the council, and that's what something probably be best to move forward with that quickly.
And I do have a small sentiment on that. I would like to get this moved forward as quickly as possible. I'd like to get this back to planning, and so I don't necessarily want to throw more on it. I definitely agree with Councilmember Wigan that there are a lot of options for how we address what currently is there. But right now, I think expeditiously, we are trying to move this forward in the process in which we have. So I would like to move staff recommendation with, if there's no other comments up here, move forward with option one. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Wait a second.
I would, oh, don't I have to make the motion? I would move that we approve the staff report preferred recommendation to broaden the definition of timeshares to include fractional homeownership in all residential zoning districts.
Give me a second then. I'll second that motion, and then let's vote. Wonderful. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the announcement for motions for reconsideration, please?
Motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.